All right, good morning, everybody. It's Wednesday, July 23rd, 2025. We're here for the Marion County Board of Commissioners Board Session. It's 9:00 AM. We're in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. If you would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We do not have anybody signed up today for public comment. So Commissioner Cameron, would you like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion that we move the consent calendar to after the last action item under the Action Items Number 17. So we'll do the consent calendar, that motion to do the consent calendar before the public hearings.
Thank you. I second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. So we're going to jump right into the action items. First is Jeff White.
A presentation.
Yes. Oh, oh, sorry, just kidding. We have a presentation. Hi, I did see you sitting in the audience. We're going to have an update on the Marion County Health and Human Services Alcohol and Drug Prevention Education Program and the opioid prevention program. It's a long title.
All right, thanks and good morning. So this morning, I'm going to be sharing, my name is Diana Dickey. I am the Substance Use Prevention Coordinator for Marion County Public Health, and I'm going to be sharing some updates from our alcohol, drug prevention and education and opioid programs. So one thing is, you'll recall, we recently received some additional funds for opioid prevention, and so we've been able to incorporate that into our projects and create some new initiatives for opioid and fentanyl prevention. So I'll be sharing a little bit about that today. So just some highlights from the program over the last year for both the just substance use prevention and opioid prevention. We've been able to reach over 4,500 individuals with prevention resources. Over 1,000 students received substance use prevention education. We were able to train Boys and Girls Club staff on youth substance use prevention, and it was pretty cool. We coordinated with City of Salem Opioid Prevention, so they were able to come in and provide some resources to those staff after that. So really great collaboration for Boys and Girls Club kids being able to get substance use prevention. We've also partnered with Dr. Jill Pearson. She's a local pediatrician, and she's been doing opioid prevention trainings and presentations for healthcare providers. So so far, over 100 healthcare providers have heard her opioid prevention message in regards with opioids in pregnancy, also talking to pediatricians, so doing some opioid prevention for the youth that they serve. And those are continuing. And we're hoping to expand that to health-related organizations, so not just healthcare providers, but anyone who works in a health-related capacity or serves women of childbearing age. And we've also done a lot of work around kratom awareness. Whoops, let me go back. I don't know, we've been there, it's fine. We've done some work around kratom awareness. As you know, we've talked about that a lot in previous meetings. So Dr. Pearson's been able to incorporate that information into her presentations as well as creating materials specifically for healthcare providers that's pretty technical, that helps them understand more about what kratom is. We've been able to present kratom information to the Maternal-Child Health Conference that happened back in May at the Health Department and anywhere we can get the message out. And we've had our kratom materials translated into several languages to be able to expand our reach on that. Just a reminder, we use the Oregon Student Health Survey to drive a lot of what we're doing and understand what's happening in terms of substance use. So it recently became an annual survey, so we're hoping we'll get some good data over the next few years and really see. I just got the most recent one, which was taken last fall, and haven't had a lot of time to analyze the data, but it's looking good in terms of more students are seeing substances as harmful, like perceiving that, which is a huge, for us, that's something that we look at. If they don't perceive it as harmful, then that's a risk factor. So we're seeing some improvements there. And then I just wanted to show a few of our...
Can I ask you a question? Do you know if in any of the education materials that they received, six through 12, that they're talking about kratom in any way yet?
I don't think so. There's an opioid prevention lesson that's required by legislation. Kratom is not included in that. If I am in a classroom and talking to students, I will talk about it, but as far as I know, there's no requirement. I've not seen anything about it. Yeah. So here's just a few of the materials that we've created. There's the kratom flyer there on the left, the one that's in several languages. We have flyers and posters. The kratom brochure that's on the top, that's the one that we created for healthcare providers. We have a health educator on our team helping us with opioid prevention, who's trained, she's been trained as a medical provider, and so she's been really helpful in advising the materials we're putting together, and she's done a lot of this work. We have an opioid in pregnancy brochure. We have an English and Spanish. And then we have some materials that we've created or adapted for parents, talking with their kids about opioids and other substances. And then just looking ahead, things that we have coming up. We've got our Guiding Good Choices Parent Education Program coming up. We're going to be working with our Youth Voice Health Committee to do some peer, some peer education on fentanyl prevention. We want to add cannabis information to the information that we have for pregnant women, which right now is kratom and opioids mostly, but we want to add cannabis to that. I mentioned expanding our opioid trainings. We're going to be promoting Odd Map utilization for first responders. Basically, that's a system where first responders can put in where overdoses happen. So that'll give us some real-time information about, you know, where that's happening in our community. And then we'll be just following emerging substances such as tylenpatine, which is something that is kind of up and coming, kind of like kratom was a couple of years ago. And so we're always watching for any of those new things that come up.
Is the, is it Odd Map or OD Map?
I think it's OD Map, yeah.
Is it an additional tool, like they have to go search down, be trained and access? Or is it something like in there, if it's law enforcement, NBT, or is it only paramedic specific?
Law enforcement can use it too, and I think Marion County Sheriff uses it. Most of our first responders are signed up for it, but a lot of them aren't utilizing it. So some of that will be figuring out what the barriers are for them to utilize it. Mostly, when I have access to it, I've seen Marion County Sheriff and City of Salem Police use it probably most. We just connected City of Salem Fire to it, so we'll be doing some, figure out, you know, how we can help remove any barriers they have to using it.
Great, thanks.
And that's all I have, unless there's any questions?
What is tylenepatine?
Yeah, so that is a substance we're starting to hear about. It's actually an antidepressant that is not indicated for use in the United States. It has been used in other places, but like 25 years ago. So now it's emerging on, just like in the retail market here. So it's pretty dangerous, you know, it causes opioid-like effects for folks. I haven't seen it in Oregon yet, but it can be sold under different names.
Like on the streets or like in the Walgreens?
Both, both convenience stores. They call it gas station heroin, because it'll be companies that, yeah, like the kind that make kratom, will make this product and sell it. So we're just watching that to see if it makes its way into Oregon and, you know, what we might need to do. But we have a pretty good, you know, because of all the work we've done on kratom, you know, that's a good foundation for us to be able to watch some of these other substances and respond.
Great. Are you, guys, at some point, we had a conversation, I don't remember when this was, we're going to be going in to talk to like the groceries, not grocery stores, but the mini-marts and such about kratom and its dangers, and maybe not placing it so obvious on a counter, doing any education. Was there any positive response to that?
So you're probably thinking of our tobacco and alcohol retail assessment that we did, where we worked with Willamette students, and we went into every tobacco retailer in the county, which is mostly convenience stores and grocery stores and a few one-offs. So in that, we were just assessing, just to see what's available, where is it available? We're working on a full analysis of that data. I can tell you, it seemed like there were about, I want to say somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 30% of convenience stores were selling kratom. The stores I went into, it was kind of a mix. Some of them had the kratom where it was really easily accessible. There were some that had it behind a locked, you know, something locked, you had to ask for it. So we'll be doing some in-depth analysis of that, and then we can do additional outreach after that.
Great, okay. Thank you. Thanks for this report. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Diana. Have a great day. Okay, Jeff, sorry. Now we'll go on to our first action item, which is to consider approval of the Master Service Agreement with Sierra Cedar LLC in the amount of $6,766,633 to provide enterprise resource planning implementation services through September 30th, 2028. And Commissioner, just so you know, we moved the consent calendar to the end.
I thought you might do that.
Welcome.
Glad you could join us for that.
Thanks, yeah, absolutely. Happy to be here.
I know less, so we'll just be patient.
Okay, there we go. All right. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jeff White. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Marion County. I'm here to discuss with you the contract with Sierra Cedar for implementation services for a new ERP system. This conversation has been going on for a couple of years, through different phases of this project. So we'll get this a little caught up. Initially, you saw us come before you to enter into a contract arrangement with a company called Plant Moran. They helped us figure out what our requirements were for a new ERP system. ERP is our financial system, our human resource system, a lot of site systems that we use to do business here at Marion County and help take care of the employees here. So Plant Moran helped us figure out our scope of work and our requirements for what we needed in a new system, what softwares we could replace, what details needed to happen with those softwares, what we do every day in business. They helped us design an RFP to move forward to select a product and an implementer, somebody to help us implement the system. It's a significant piece of software for the county. It touches every employee's lives here at a minimum through time card entry. But how we track employees, all their information about them, how we handle all of our financial systems, how we pay people, how we keep our general ledger managed, that's just not a project that we can do on our own. So with Plant Moran's help, we went through a process, request for proposals. We received 17 responses to the request. We used some criteria there. They had to have some minimum number of similar installations for counties, so we would know that they know what they're doing. They had to meet some timelines, some requirements within the proposals. They had to be complete, and we had over 1,000 specific requirements we needed them to do. I think around 1,600. Through that process, 12 proposers met those requirements and moved forward for a scoring round. And we have an executive team that's kind of managed this. It's a number of department heads who are involved in the specific applications that are being used in our ERP system. So we had, again, some criteria to go through and score those, and got down to selecting a short list of five different implementers who essentially, three were for Oracle and two were for Workday. We sat in a room, we brought employees from around the county who would be using the system in, over several days, to let those implementers make their pitch, so to speak, of how they could meet our requirements. After those were completed, we came to a conclusion through another scoring process to select Sierra Cedar, which is the company that we have the contract before you today. Sierra Cedar best met how we viewed we needed help implementing this product, and they were an Oracle provider. We did determine, we thought Oracle Fusion was a product that was better for Marion, suited for Marion County than the Workday product. So we ended up with three implementers we had to choose between. We felt like Sierra Cedar had kind of the best of everything, the best experience, the best team they brought forward, that the way they planned, the implementation plan they had would work for us. So we selected them. We have been negotiating, kind of in the contract phase for several months to get to a place where we have a contract that we think is workable to help us implement this product. These are the products under the gray bar that we call the core requirements that they'll be replacing or implementing. There's a couple under the optional category that we think we might be interested in, but we haven't been able to determine that yet. We'll figure that out during implementation if those products would make sense. Right now, we don't know enough about them. It's a long list that you can see ultimately when we get done implementing, which we'll start implementing, they'll be here Monday if this contract is signed. They're ready to be here to have a kickoff meeting and to start meeting with departments and gathering more data, figuring out the detailed schedule, and how we'll go about their implementation plan, which should have us, if we stay on track, implementing as of November 1, 2026. Then they'll hang around for a couple of months to make sure everything's working right. So by January 27, we should be on the go. Their total price of the contract, as you mentioned, Commissioner, is $6.7 million. A couple hundred thousand of that is there for travel expenses if we bring them on-site, like they'll be here for the kickoff. The actual contact is $6,543,000 and something for the services. It's a fixed-price contract. As long as we stay on track and everything goes well, that should be it. That's our intention. We've got a lot of folks involved, and we'll continue to do so so that when we do turn this thing on, it'll work, and we won't be in the headlines of the newspaper. That's our goal. So with that, Commissioners, if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, the contract is before you to consider for signing.
Thanks, Jeff. Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Just a, probably a comment, Jeff, thank you for the work that... There's several people in this room that have been putting in hours and hours and hours to get us to this point, and we'll be putting in a lot more. And I think one of the, besides this cost to the taxpayers, we're also going to have a overhead where we have to bring in some other people so our people can learn the system, right? That's not in this contract. That's a cost that...
Training is involved from Sierra Cedar.
Right.
They will do that, but we, I just brought to you yesterday the PO for the actual licensing cost. That's not in this one. This is just helping us implement.
Right. But we're going to have a lot of staff. They're going to be put in extra time.
Yes.
That's my point, so...
Yes. And to identify, I wish I knew the number, but staff from all over the county who we call subject matter experts or leads. I think the leads who are like our payroll manager, our HR manager, the managers who oversee this work are the leads, and they're expected largely to be available mostly full-time, if not throughout the entire project at certain points when their piece of the puzzle might be. And then the SMEs are multiple hours per week or month, depending on, again, when we're doing AP, when we're handling payroll. This is the largest software project this county has done since Oracle was implemented 25 years ago. It touches everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Big deal.
Yep. Commissioner Wells, would you make the motion, please?
I'd be happy to. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Master Services Agreement with Sierra Cedar LLC, amount of $6,766,633, provide enterprise resource planning implementation services through September 30th, 2028.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Thanks, Jeff, and everybody else.
Thank you.
Okay, Wendy, we're going to go into several action items for health, and the first one is to approve an incoming funds contract with OHA.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Wendy Zeeker, Public Health Division Director for Marion County Health and Human Services.
Maybe we should have filmed their exit, so everybody could have seen a glimpse of the outside team. It was a lot of people.
It was a lot of people. So I'm bringing forward this public health intergovernmental agreement specific to problem gambling service. While this agreement aligns with the broader IGA we typically see from the Oregon Health Authority, there's a few key distinctions. This year, I'd like to highlight. There's been a change in funding structure. In previous years, for problem gambling prevention, came through the County Financial Assistance Award. This year, however, the state has changed its approach. Instead of allocating funds to continue through the CFAA, the Oregon Health Authority is now contracting directly with the entities providing the service. In Marion County's case, the prevention work remains within our public health division, and we are the designated service provider. The amount obligated in this contract is consistent with what we expected and aligns with past funding levels. This shift reflects the fact that not all counties directly provide problem gambling services, prompting OHA to carve out this portion of funding from the CFAA and direct it to the actual service agencies. For Marion County, it means continuing our existing work with a new contractual pathway, but no interruption or reduction in services. Locally, this work is led by Heidi Johnson and our prevention team, who coordinates these efforts and frequently updates you on initiatives in our work plan, such as ILEAD, which is the Local Leadership Conference for Teens and Older Adult Outreach School-Based Prevention Education, a youth video contest, and problem gambling prevention training for coaches in sports.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Wendy?
No.
Commissioner Cameron, would you make the motion?
Madam Chair, I will. I move that we approve the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $301,200 to support behavioral health, addiction services programs administered under Services ID AD AD, problem gambling prevention services retroactive to July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's Wendy.
All right. Naomi and Christie. Nope, just kidding. Rhett and Naomi.
Good morning. Switching it up on you this morning. My name is Rhett Martin, Administrative Services Division Director for Marion County Health and Human Services.
I'm Naomi Higginz, the Division Director for Housing Programs.
You'll want to move that microphone poster to you, like it's your best friend. Thanks. All right.
So as you're aware, Naomi and Christie's Housing Division currently pays rent subsidies and utility payments for clients that are enrolled in those housing and client assistance programs. Currently, we are paying a vendor $45 per check to process these rent payments or utility payments on our behalf. After some internal review, we have moved towards a cost-saving method of bringing them internal. So we will begin processing these payments, these subsidies, through our internal health accounts payable team. What that means is we need a mechanism in place to be able to pay these landlords or these utility companies. And as you're aware, we have to have a contract in place with every single person that we pay money to. This special procurement, though, would allow us to directly pay each landlord as these clients that are enrolled in our programs have been living in their residences for a certain amount of time, or they've been, they have established utility accounts that if we don't have a contract with them, we still need to be able to pay them on their behalf. So this special procurement allows us to forego the procurement process and directly pay our clients that are already enrolled. So with your approval, we'll be able to continue allowing these clients to live where they live and experience the utilities that they currently have, but stay enrolled in our programs, so. And then the $15 million is the estimated amount that it will take in pass-through funds to sustain this through the end of 2030. Are there any questions?
Yeah. Can you go back to the forego process? Just tell me about that.
Yeah, so instead of, we wouldn't directly contract with each landlord that this client comes in with. Yeah, they have their current lease agreement, and instead of having a direct contract with that landlord to pay them, we would do a special procurement where basically we would make the payments, we're only making the payments on their behalf for a limited duration of time. And then we would send a hold harmless letter in addition to that payment, stating that the county is not liable for any damages or we're not tied to the lease.
I'm just confused on the special procurement part of it.
I think my understanding is somebody is in an apartment.
I understand that.
So our traditional process, where we do an RFP, and if someone other than the landlord wins the RFP, then potentially we would force that family to move out of the apartment that they're in. So the special procurement says, we're saying, we would be saying as a board, there's a good reason for us not to make this a competitive process because we don't want to force people to move from their houses.
They've been there for a long time.
Right. So I guess I'm just confused, I think, on the process of it. I understand all the words that came out of your mouth and also the Commissioners, but just break down for me on, like, the number of clients that we serve, which it said somewhere in here, a lot.
We're currently serving about 120. It obviously ranges month-to-month, but it's currently 120, but Naomi's programs are growing, and she could probably speak to that, but they're looking to reach up to 300 individuals.
So it's, this is like an arbitrary process, like somewhere in our rules, we're just saying that we're not going to require an RFP, which makes sense, and we're calling it a special procurement just so we can write the landlord a check after we've validated the contract with the client?
Essentially, yes.
And so the landlord has to sign some kind of agreement?
It would just be a hold harmless letter is all that we're, is the current plan. And we did, we have worked with Toby in Finance as well as Scott in Legal and developed this plan with them.
All right, it's clear as mud. Okay. And then the $15 million. Is there any other providers in the community that are receiving substantial amounts of money to do this work?
To this level, not that I know of. That doesn't mean there aren't, but not that I know of.
And this is an up-to amount?
Up-to amount, yes.
Five years. Over five years.
And this covers more... And this covers more than just one of our programs? So it covers our HRSN, our barrier removal funds, our RAP. So it's not just one program that this is where the pass-through funds would be coming for, it's for multiple programs.
Great, okay. That would've been helpful information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great, I'm fine. You guys don't have any questions? Commissioner Willis, if you can make the motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve a special procurement to allow Marion County Health and Human Services to ask as a fiscal intermediary for the distribution of 15 million dollars for multiple contractual agreements related to MHS 12 Rental Assistance Program Services, with a term beginning September 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2030.
I'll second the motion.
The motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now Christie, and Naomi. We're gonna talk about another IGA.
Yes.
Except for DHS.
It is, yes. Good morning, commissioners. Christina Burci, I'm the Program Manager for our housing programs at Marion County Health and Human Services. I'm asking for approval for our Fourth Amendment on the intergovernmental agreement between us and Oregon Department of Human Services. This program was developed in 2020 as a pilot program, working with child welfare as the last step that families needed to take to either prevent their children from going into foster care, or to get their children back from foster care. It was extremely successful. We ended up, about 18 children were returned in about four months. After that, it became permanently funded by the state, and now we're on our Fourth Amendment to this contract. The contract adds a little bit more funding for administrative costs and supervision. It also dictates that, on average, we'll be serving about 10 families a month. We've had some difficulty getting referrals from ODHS, simply because the housing authorities have been on shortfall for about a year, and a lot of the families really depend on those family reunification vouchers, or, I'm sorry, vouchers.
Housing.
Preference. Thank you. And, and other, other funds. So now we're kind of going full steam ahead, and that, that 10 a month kind of helps hold them accountable to make sure they're sending us referrals. We also have a process that identifies families that might be served by this contract. And these families have high, high barriers. Typically, they've worked with other programs to get housing and haven't been successful. So we, we are usually very good, we have about a 70, overall have about a 76% success rate, as long as the families engage, we're usually able to house them. In the last year or so, we've had a 78% success rate, and I think that that continued to, continues to raise with other resources such as HRSN. And I'd like to share a couple stories with you, just to give you some idea of the work that we do. We have a family that came to us, the, the father committed suicide, and the family was still living in the home in which he passed, and they were having a lot of difficulty dealing with that tragic loss. And he was also the primary income earner for the family. Through this program, we were able to relocate the family into their home, get them connected to HRSN services, which allowed the mother time to obtain employment, and now the family is on a Section 8 housing voucher and doing very well. We have another family recently who went through our Ready to Rent program, identified over at Soaring Heights. We partnered with them through our Creating Equal Housing Opportunities program, and, and identified that they were involved with child welfare. Families had, both of the parents had a past eviction, had a criminal record, and we were able to get them housing and connected to a family reunification voucher. And now the families are working on permanent employment, and... I was reading, I thought they were getting some education as well. But that just gives you an idea that we also kind of braid funding with other programs, we work with other programs and community partners to ensure the success of these families. So hoping that you'll consider approving today.
Can you, both, for both contracts, for this one and the previous one, can you just send me some data? This one specifically, like, since the inception, it was pretty bumpy at the beginning, and I'm glad that it's consistently grown, but like, how many have we served? How many children have been impacted? What are the zip codes that they're residing in at this point? Is it Salem Housing Authority, or Marion County Housing Authority? And then any, any opportunities or challenges that we can probably, that we can work towards facilitating solutions towards would be helpful? And then on the current, the contract that Rhett brought forward, it's been a while since we've had a housing update, so on the next health update, I'd like that to be a priority discussion, and I'd like you to dive into the data on it. Thank you.
And I can tell you that we've actually housed 46 families since the inception of this contract. We received about 63 referrals overall, but I can break down that data, just so you know, if they're residing in Marion County or Salem Housing Authority.
Or if they're porting out, maybe going somewhere else with that voucher? And you said it's now at a 79% success rate?
A 78%.
Okay. So of the 31% that's not, or 21% that's not, can you give us some information as to like what the challenges are?
Sure.
You've mentioned when they're engaged in service, system services, they're most successful, which I, that makes sense, but...
Some just don't return our phone calls at all, so they're not in contact with us at all, and we have to close because of that reason.
Sure.
Some have had open criminal cases, and landlords will not house anybody with an open criminal case. And so sometimes they actually come back. So it is a program, if, if they're referred to us and we're not able to be successful, they can come back at a later date, and we can work with them again, and we have done that with several of our families so far. And some are in a lot of financial debt, 20 to 30,000 dollars in collections. And so those are the significant barriers that don't allow us to. But we'll, we'll help them with other, getting them connected to bankruptcy attorneys, or getting them connected to a shelter, I mean, whatever we can do within our power, as long as they're engaging with us, we're able to at least remove some of those barriers.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. All right.
I'm good.
Commissioner Cameron?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve Amendment Number Four to the Incoming Funds Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services to add 134,099.84 for a new not-to-exceed IGA total of 384,099.84 to provide housing placement services to families referred by ODHS through June 30th, 2026.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, both.
Thank you.
All right. Public Works, Kevin, you're gonna come talk to us about Trail Keepers of Oregon. Good morning.
Kevin Thompson, Park Supervisor, Marion County.
I was just observing your, I like your suit and tie. It's different than the Patagonia hat from yesterday.
I keep it up, you know, mixing it up. So I am here to request approval for contract PW 6607-25 with Trail Keepers of Oregon. This is an on-call contract within not-to-exceed limit of 160,000 over a three-year timeframe. This is for rebuilding trails and rehabbing trails throughout our park system. This, Trail Keepers of Oregon was chosen through a request for proposal process. Again, it is an on-call contract, meaning this is only used when we have projects that are identified, scope identified, and we have funds identified to pay for that. So again, not to exceed 160, but not guaranteed that we're spending that much. This contract will be greatly beneficial towards our efforts of rebuilding our canyon parks, getting trails open safely, access to a lot of the portions of our parks that are still closed, because it's just not safe, or, or those trails have been completely destroyed in the fire and recovery efforts. So this contract's very beneficial in getting us towards getting that open safely for, for visitors. And one interesting point about this one is, this contract, is that it is required that the contractor utilize volunteers in, in these efforts, these rebuilding efforts. And this was intentional to engage the public in helping to restore their parks, our parks, and foster a sense of ownership through there. And Trail Keepers of Oregon has a long history of utilizing this, this framework, utilizing volunteers and, and their own skilled paid staff to lead the volunteers, volunteer coordination efforts. So it's a good melt of, of paid staff to do the more technical aspects and leading volunteers out in the field, and, and also having a very high quality of work. They've been doing this for a very long time, and we've actually used them on a couple of smaller projects throughout. So we're very happy with their work, and, yeah.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Thanks, Kevin. Did, was this group involved with the trails down at Minto?
Yes, portion, yes.
They did a good job. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Willis?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the contract for services with Trail Keepers of Oregon, the not-to-exceed amount of 160,000 dollars for recreational trail building and rehabilitation work in Marion County Parks through July 31st, 2028.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. Have a good day. All right, Chris Einmo. Amendment Number Five, the Standard Professional Services Contract with Keller. This is over Brooks Hotmire. All right.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, my name is Chris Einmo, Senior Project Manager of Marion County Public Works. I'm here to request the Fifth Amendment to the Keller contract on the Brooks Hotmire Drinking Water Improvement Project. So this, this amendment proposes to take us from 60% design up to the final design of the Brooks Water System, and that is, the bulk of the value of the amendment is there. So that would start immediately, we go, we go straight into design review and completing 90% design as soon as possible, so that we could then use that to negotiate the guaranteed maximum price for delivery of the project with the CMGC. Then we just go immediately to 100%, and then final permitted approval, and stamp plans and specifications. So that amount is a little over 400,000, so that's about 80% of the contract. And that, as soon as that's approved by this board, all the work would begin immediately, and we would anticipate having 90% ready to deliver very shortly thereafter, because we've already made a lot of progress on it. There's also a line for bid support in there, under that same scope. That's because the CMGC will be taking all of the subcontracted work, so the, the majority of the construction work, and they'll actually be putting it out to bid as soon as those 90% plans are done. So Keller Associates would be providing cemental review and bid review for, for completeness as part of that. And then there's also an allowance for initial construction phase services, that's only about 20% of the contract. The reason it's structured that way is because of the aggressive timelines that we're under for the American Rescue Plan Act funding. We do anticipate that there will be further construction engineering and support services needed, that will be a larger amount in the future, but we can't negotiate exactly what that will be until the design is completed. But we also need to keep the, keep the bidding and construction process moving along. So what we, what we're proposing is a smaller allowance of about 100,000 to provide that initial construction support services, and then we would be coming back to this board for a larger amendment when we're ready to basically break around and have Keller on board as a construction engineers.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Just the total budget of this project. I know we've got, we've talked about this before. What, what was the number that we are looking at? Was it 12?
I believe it was 14,988. So about 15 million.
Okay, so we're, we've still got lots of room.
[laughing].
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Commissioner Cameron?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I will move that we approve Amendment Number Five, the Standard Professional Services Agreement with Keller and Associates, Inc., to add American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of 528,373 dollars for a new not-to-exceed contract total of 2,397,829 dollars to provide final engineering, design, construction services for the Brooks Hotmire Drinking Water Improvement and Wastewater Projects through December 31st, 2026.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Now we're gonna go back to the top of the agenda, and Commissioner Willis is gonna read the consent.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
It's not that long.
What do you mean, compared to what, Commissioner Cameron?
Compared to the last three.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt a consent agenda or community services, approve an order delegating authority to the Marion County Chief Administrative Officer to execute and authorize payments under the Marion County Down Payment Assistance Program in the not-to-exceed amount of 125,000 dollars for each application for fiscal year 25, 26. Under Health and Human Services, approve the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of 5,865,402.80 for Marion County Health and Human Services to provide and operate contracts for public health services, retroactive to July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2027. And approve the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of 140,116 dollars to provide treatment and education services for veterans under Service ID Code AND 65, Intoxicated Driver Program Fund, retroactive to July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2027. And receive notice of the hearing officer's decision denying zone change case number 25-002 Creative Electric LLC. Approve right-of-way dedication to dedicate to the public for right-of-way purposes, a one-foot reserve strip known as Block A, and a one-foot reserve strip known as Block B, that was created in the plat of Alder Estates. Approve an order amending the Marion County Transportation Safety Action Plan, TSAP, by replacing Appendix C of the current plan with a revised Appendix C, which removes the draft watermark, and includes a signed letter from the State of Oregon. Approve early work amendment number two to the Construction Manager General Contractor, CMGC, contract with Slaton Constructors Incorporated, to add the not-to-exceed amount of 151,962 dollars for a new contract total of 914,559 dollars to provide investigatory potholing of existing underground utilities for the Brooks Hotmire Water and Wastewater Improvement Project through December 31st, 2026. Approve, under Sheriff's Office, approve amendment number one to the contract for services with Salem Health to add 250,000 dollars for a not, for a new not-to-exceed contract total of 850,000 dollars to continue to provide hospital services to adults in custody at the Marion County Jail through November 30th, 2025. And approve an order to officially dissolve the Marion County Justice Reinvestment Council, effective July 23rd, 2025, and transfer management of the Marion County Reentry Initiative Client and Victim Services Support Account to the Marion County Sheriff's Office with financial oversight responsibilities assigned to the Marion County Community Corrections Board. Under Tax Office, approve an order for a property tax refund for Northwood Apartments, number 804, account 520305, in the amount of 22,532.48.
Thank you so much. May I get a second?
All right, yeah, I will second that motion. Thank you.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Okay. Now, we're gonna move into some public hearings. We have two this morning, so I'm going to pause the session and open a public hearing. The first one is gonna be a public hearing to consider a new franchise application for BioClean Industry Corporation. Brian May is at the dais. The board has reviewed the documents contained in the record and has no ex parte excommunication regarding this matter, unless specifically disclosed. If there are any objections to notice jurisdiction or conflicts of interest, the parties can raise them during testimony. Planning staff will list the applicable criteria for the application. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable, applicable criteria. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence may preclude appeal on that issue. Thank you, Brenda. All right, Brian, have at it.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brian May, Public Works, Environmental Services Division Manager. And as mentioned, we're here to address a franchise application for BioClean Industries. I think it goes without saying, this is the first we've had in an application for a franchise in over 30 years. So I'm probably a little rusty since I've never done one of these, so please bear with me as we go through this process. As we look for this process, as I mentioned, and have not done it for over 30 years, we look to our solid waste code, which gives us the guidance that we're looking for. So specifically, 805.240 is a section covered the issuance of a franchise. It's nice that it kind of walks us through this process and what it looks like. So I'll do a little bit of that for you today, is kind of give us a little bit of an overview of what the process looks like, and then dive into the detail of the applicant as we go through. So as part of this, as I mentioned, we received an application from BioClean on April 25th. So code requires that we first take a look at the application. We sat with the board in the work session on May 8th, discussed and did kind of an initial overview. At that point, we determined whether we move forward with the public hearing, and of course, that's where we're at today, is at that public hearing. As part of that process, we're required to post said public hearing, which in solid waste code actually dictates that we post it at the Marion County Courthouse. And then we also have to publish it in writing in some periodical within a county. So we chose, staff chose a statement journal. It had to be posted twice. It was posted on the 26th of June and then also on the 16th of July. So during the public hearing, there'll be, again, staff testimony, the applicant. Kind of a unique piece of this is all current solid waste franchise holders are also allowed to address the board during the public hearing at that time also, along with public, and then any, of course, any written testimony that may be brought forward. If we go to that process of granting a franchise, it'll be based on the application, written in oral testimony, and any documentation or evidence provided during those. And then, of course, the board can either grant or deny said application. As mentioned, we received this application, quote, quote, where staff did, on April 25th. When we get into granting, if we grant this, it will be done through a board order and then also a franchise agreement that'll be entered between Marion County and the applicant. The application was deemed complete. It had all the necessary components as defined by code with an application fee, all the applicant's information, the franchise details, experience qualifications, insurance requirements, et cetera, and then a certificate. So kind of guiding into the actual application, BioClean Industries is requesting a transfer station application. So when we think about transportation, typically we think about garbage. We're not talking about waste here. We're going to talk about medical waste. So this is specific to medical waste processing. So that's what this application is for. So they won't handle so-called garbage, recycling, organics, yardery, et cetera, as part of that process. They're proposing to treat the medical waste within Marion County, and then also to import some material from outside of Marion County. Marion Environmental Services actually collects the medical waste within the county, so nothing really changes on that front as far as the process is considered. Reworld closed or incinerator closed December 31st of 2024. That was our disposal outlet for Marion Environmental to dispose of medical waste. What BioClean is proposing is to be that new disposal opportunity. So they will process the medical waste, and then it'll be deemed by DEQ standards as garbage and can be disposed of appropriately at a approved subtitled D landfill. Now, the landfill can put some restrictions on special handling and requirements of this, but by DEQ standards, it's garbage once it's been treated. I'm glad to say that BioClean has over 20 years of experience within the industry. Previously, when Marion County had our own medical waste program, they were actually a customer and complied with our requirements to bring medical waste into the incinerator. As part of this process, BioClean has also obtained a conditional use permit within City of Salem for the treatment and transfer of said medical waste. And then additionally, the Oregon Health Authority has provided authorization for approval of their process of that medical waste also. As part of the requirements, we also have that the applicant must provide proof of insurance, which they have, of liability insurance with a minimum of a half a million dollars per occurrence. It also must list Marion County as additionally insured, and then the policy must have a requirement for at least a 30-day written notice to any form of cancellation. That just allows us notice if for some reason the applicant chooses to terminate their So that's pretty much my staff report. There are two options for us to consider for the board as we look to move forward. Option one is to move to close the hearing and direct public works, staff, and legal counsel to prepare draft findings for potential approval of the application as well as a draft franchise agreement. Option two is move to close the hearing and direct public works, staff, and legal counsel to prepare draft findings for potential denial of the application.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Brian before we move on to the applicant presentation?
I did, but I forgot.
Well, it's a good thing he's not going.
It'll come back to me, Brian.
Okay. So Margaret, I apologize, I can't read your last name, so you'll just have to say it on the record. And you're welcome to come over there just to speed it up. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Margaret Ganderbo. I'm the attorney for the applicant, BioClean Industries. My address for notice purposes is 250 Church Street, Suite 200, Salem, Oregon 97301. As Brian indicated, BioClean has been operating under various entities for about 20 years doing this type of work. They have had no incidents and are well familiarized with the regulations and have trained staff who are certified to deal with this type of waste. The kind of component that's changing in their operations will be purchasing a machine that's called the OMW 1000, which is an ozone treatment machine. It sterilizes waste by shredding it, injecting ozone into a chamber which sterilizes the medical waste and converts it to that solid waste that's kind of similar to household or regular commercial waste. That machine was recently approved and reviewed by the Oregon Health Authority, and a couple of iterations of that machine have come out since the original approval, which have also been authorized for the treatment of this type of waste. Kind of the unique component of it is that it doesn't actually connect into any of our public infrastructures. So the only byproducts are the ozone, which dissipates into the atmosphere, and then the solid waste, which has been sterilized by the treatment process. We already went through the conditional use permit application stage, and City of Salem has determined that the use is consistent with the area and won't have any negative impacts on the surrounding property owners. So at this point, we're requesting this franchisee agreement, and then we are in the process of obtaining a DEQ permit for the operation of this facility. The machine itself is on a regular maintenance schedule by the producer of the machine, so it goes through regular software updates and will be actually serviced on a quarterly basis to make sure that it's continuing to operate and meet the sanitation requirements that have been approved. With the closing of the incinerator, currently, this type of waste is being transported out of the county to eastern Oregon for final disposal, which just by virtue of automobile transportation opens the community up to risks of spills that will be reduced by having a local disposal point. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. The owner, Chad Robinson, wanted to be here today, but he is unfortunately unable to because he had a previously scheduled surgery. So I can do my best to answer any factual questions, but we can always provide more information during the actual findings period if needed.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No, no.
Okay, thank you for being here. Brian, you want to come back up? Commissioner Cameron, did you remember your question?
Yeah.
Great.
So, Brian, would this facility take out-of-county medical waste?
Yes, they're requesting to do some out-of-county waste, yes.
Okay, they'll have a capacity to do that.
Yes.
And then is this overall going to help reduce the recent increase in medical waste costs?
Yes, that's our intent here, is by building the process within the county, as Margaret mentioned, it's that transportation cost or cost to go to clear to Idaho. Through the process they're going through right now, they're trying to seek approval for a local landfill option for disposal, and a lot of that's contingent on whether it's a republic services landfill or potentially waste connections, but we are anticipating a reduction in cost.
Okay, thank you. Can you just keep me apprised, just to kind of, as you go through this process, I think this is obviously an important addition to our solid waste system here, but also the 70% increase that our residents felt in January because of Senator Patterson's stupid piece of legislation that closed down Coffin View is frustrating to me, and this is something that I think will help fix that. So, quote me all day.
I'm not.
All right, so for the record, we don't have any testimony in opposition. We did receive one letter in support via email for the record, and it's been submitted to the record. Is that correct, Brenda? All right, are there any general comments or questions from either of you?
I think you said it right.
Okay, well, you're welcome to add on anytime you want. Okay, if not, Commissioner Cameron?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and maybe just, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
And direct public works, staff, and legal counsel to prepare draft findings for potential approval of the application as well as draft the franchise agreement.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Commissioner Cameron officially closed that public hearing, and I'm going to open another public hearing to consider an appeal of the hearings officer's decision denying conditional use, case number 24-028, Marvin Coffenstein. If I got that wrong, please let me know when you come up later. Austin, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Give me one second to get a couple of papers in order, and I will start with my staff report.
Oh, do I need to read the same statement for this one? Okay. While he's doing that, "The board has reviewed the documents contained in the record and has had no ex parte communication regarding this matter unless specifically disclosed. If there are any objections to notice jurisdiction or conflicts of interest, the parties can raise them during testimony. Planning staff will list the applicable criteria for the application. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable criteria. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence may preclude appeal on that issue." Yes, thank you. What is this?
So being passed around right now is an additional testimony submission from neighbors that was received yesterday before we could get it to you guys electronically, so it is being passed around hard copy.
All right, whatever, you're ready.
Perfect, I'm ready. For the record, this is Austin Barnes, Marion County Planning Division. The item before you today is an application for a conditional use permit to establish a mulching service as a commercial operation in conjunction with farm use on a 9.72 acre parcel in an EFU exclusive farm use zone located at 5711 Brook Lake Road Northeast, Salem. The property is on the north side of Brook Lake Road. It is roughly half a mile east of the intersection of Brook Lake Road and Highway 99, which is also the unincorporated community of Brooks-Hotmier. The property contains a dwelling, accessory structures, and substantial amount of tree debris and heavy machinery. Surrounding uses are predominantly agricultural operations located on all sides except for the northern half of the west property line, which are parcels zoned acreage residential. Those parcels are also within the Brooks-Hotmier unincorporated community. Commercial uses within the Brooks-Hotmier unincorporated community are located half a mile down Brook Lake Road to the west, where it intersects with Highway 99. Additionally, a dedicated right-of-way for 57th Avenue Northeast, which is a non-county road, runs along the full extent of the western property line, but this right-of-way is unimproved and is not actively used as a roadway. The planning division requested comments from various governmental agencies. Those that provided comments were the Public Works Land Development Engineering and Permits Division, Marion County Building Department, Marion County Septic Department, Marion County Code Enforcement, and Marion County Fire District Number One. These comments are located in the case file for reference, but generally do not have a large sway on the application as there are not septic permits or building permits being proposed. The relevant code sections for this application are Marion County Code 17.136.060A, which are the criteria for all conditional use applications, and additionally, Marion County Code Section 17.136.060D, which are the specific criteria for establishing a commercial use in conjunction with farm use on an EFU zoned property. In this case, when there are two different code sections pertaining to a use, the county must use those to approve, and in this case, both sections must be satisfied in order to approve the application. Initially, the application was approved by staff and subsequently appealed by neighbors with additional information indicating potential impacts to nearby farming operations and residential homes. This went to a hearing with our hearings officer and was denied by the hearings officer on March 28th, and was subsequently appealed by the applicants who are the property owners operating the mulching service. The HO or hearings officer found on March 28th that this did not meet the code section or two different criterias in the commercial use in conjunction with farm use code section that the commercial activity must be primarily a customer or supplier of farm uses, and the products and services provided must be essential to the practice of agriculture. This was found due to the lack of evidence provided by the applicants. Noise issues were also raised by neighbors stating that the sound of the mulching is very loud and causes disturbances. The applicants have submitted a noise study to this point. Staff has reviewed this against our noise ordinance and can provide questions if needed or answer questions if needed, excuse me. The hearings officer also found that they did not meet the conditional use code section 17.136.060A4, which is any noise associated with the use will not have a significant adverse impact on nearby land uses. And the applicant has submitted new suggested conditions of approval, and staff can answer questions regarding those. Those are contained in the larger 113-page submission. And with that, I will stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Austin. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Austin at this time? Okay, we will... Who is... Okay, there's several. Hi, Mark. It's nice to see you.
Good morning. Thank you very much for this opportunity this morning. Fellow Commissioners, Mark Shipman, Land Use Attorney with Southfield Griggs, 250 Church Street, Suite 200, Salem, Oregon 97301, here this morning on behalf of Marvin Coffenstein, who is the applicant and property owner for this application. With me this morning also is Billy Dalto. He's co-counsel on this request. And then the applicant, Marvin Coffenstein, is here. And then Lindsey King, our planning consultant. So our initial presentation is going to be in three parts. I'm going to address the application and its compliance with the mandatory approval criteria. Marvin's going to come up and testify as to the nature of the operation, why he does it, and be able to answer any specific questions that you may have of him. And then finally, Billy Dalto's going to wrap up our initial portion, and will address Marvin's compliance with the settlement agreement with Marion County. In summary, this application request meets all the mandatory approval criteria. It's beneficial to local farmers, and it should be approved. Your planning staff initially approved the application, subject to nine conditions of approval. That decision was subsequently appealed, as noted by Austin. Before I start on my presentation, I'd like to enter into the record a photograph, an aerial photograph, that was taken yesterday that I think helps illustrate the mulching operation as it currently exists. This photograph was taken yesterday morning and shows... I'll let... This photograph was taken yesterday morning and shows, I'll let staff hand that out. And this photograph is really, is a great illustration with respect to the mulching operation, how it's laid out, you can see the, the mulch in the center of the property, the grinder is located in the central, central portion of the property. Equipment associated with the, the mulching operation, tree trimming is, is located to the west on your left. To the north, there's some additional equipment and then there's some larger logs and then some additional tree material. And then north of that and then also east of that, there's a berm and there's a large berm on this property and that's really important as it applies with respect to mitigation of the noise of this use. That berm is anywhere between eight to 10 feet high and anywhere from six to eight feet wide. And Mr. Coffenstein has been planting Leland Cypress trees on top of that. So those trees could be growing, you know, over the next years substantial both girth, width, and height in order to mitigate, mitigate both any visual aspects and in addition to any sound or noise aspects. So. The hearings officer held, held her hearing and issued a decision denying the application as, as Austin noted. She had three primary reasons. The mulching operation wasn't a customer supplier farm uses, the mulch produced wasn't essential for the practice of agriculture and there was insufficient with evidence with respect to noise. So I want to address each one in order and first with respect to not being a, a primary supplier of farm uses, I believe that the hearings officer mischaracterizes the nature of the operation. She narrowly determined that the grinding activity was, was being the mulching operation in entirety and found it to be incidental and frequent and more of a way for Mr. Coffenstein to get rid of excess tree trimmings. But that's not what the criteria is intended to focus on. This criteria simply asks, is the farm use primarily a customer or supplier of farm uses? And in this case, our position is, is that we're a supplier of farm uses. That mulch is used beneficially for farm operators here in Marion County. And your staff determined this in their initial approval and we agree with that. Further, Mr. Coffenstein only delivers finished product to farm operators that he personally knows. Nothing, no, there's no public delivery of any mulch. And this mulch that's produced is large chunks, it's not what you'd, you'd go down to Home Depot and, and pick up in a, in a 50 pound bag to put into your garden or, you know, for your landscape purposes. These are large chunks that are specifically used primarily for cattle. And their, their purpose is, is that, is that it, it helps the cattle with respect to footing, particularly in our, in, in our wet environment in the, in the fall, winter, and early spring months. So Mr. Coffenstein obtained affidavits from a few of these farm operators. This is considered substantial evidence verifying that the applicant only delivers the finished mulch to the farm, to those farm operations. So we clearly satisfy this criteria in spite of what the hearings officer found.
Mr. Shipman.
Yes.
Sorry.
Commissioner has a question for you.
Thank you.
Just a fact question. That mulch is not sold to the farmers, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
It's given free of charge to the farmers.
It's delivered free of charge.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And so this kind of gets back to, you know, the hearings officer seemed to place emphasis with respect to the size, frequency, and assumed use of the tree material. But I think that mischaracterizes the mandatory approval criteria. There's, there's nothing in the, in the criteria and there's nothing in case law that speaks to the size of the operation, that speaks to the frequency of the operation. Really the key is whether or not Mr. Coffenstein is a supplier of the farm uses and he is. As an aside, Mr. Coffenstein doesn't need to store and destroy the debris on the property as a part of his tree service operation. He could take the tree debris to landfill, to improve county landfill, like other tree trimming companies, but he thought of a different productive process that could help farm operators that he knows that would be able to benefit from this mulch product. Under, under the hearings officer's second reason for denying the application, she identified that it wasn't essential for the practice of agriculture and this, this criteria is really more nuanced. Here this hearings officer interpreted the criterion based on relevant case law in, in her reading that required the proposed use be unique. But there's nothing in the case law that says, that uses that word, that says that the use has to be unique, nothing in the case laws addresses that whatsoever. And nor does it require or even infer that standard or definition be applied as, as the hearings officer did. What Oregon case law does impose or reflect is that there needs to be a close relationship between the proposed use and that, that commercial activity and the farm uses it serves. So think of it that way, it's, it, with respect to the relationship, it needs to be a close relationship, it doesn't require that needs to be unique. In this case, the applicant also provided with those affidavits from those farm operators that support this close relationship, that the mulch is essential to their local farm operations. These farm operators verified that the mulch was essential to their cattle operations and they described the benefits of that such that the clean mulch is free of, of inorganic material and think of that as being like metals that could be in, that could be in the potential mulch. It's, that could harm, harm the cattle, it, for moisture retention, weed suppression, and the protection of erosion. The hearings officer further seemed to also place emphasis on alternative methods that, that could be used instead of, instead of the, the mulch. But again, I think this mischaracterizes the mandatory approval criteria. There's nothing in the case law that, that reflects or, or requires that an applicant needs to provide or evaluate or analyze potential alternative uses. I think that the, really that the focus needs to look at whether the proposed use bears that close relationship and we feel like we've done that. We've done that not only with the affidavits from those farm operators, we've also done that with the testimony of Marvin Coffenstein. The final issue that she had was with respect to noise impacts. And so she said there was insufficient evidence in our letter to you, we said we'd come back with a noise study, we did. We engaged Lindsay King, private planning consultant, to complete a noise study for this application. Ms. King completed a thorough noise study which we provided to you. In the study, she found that the act of mulching of the wood into the chips with the grinder, that that noise would, that would be experienced by the adjacent properties would be less than the maximum noise amount allowed by the Marion County Code. In fact, she, she found that the noise that was, the noise on Brook Lake Road was greater in sound than the mulching, than the grinder, as the grinder was occurring. When she was standing on Brook Lake Road, she could not hear the grinder, as the grinder was operational over the truck and car noise on Brook Lake Road. So the reason for this is really threefold. The grinder situated in the central portion of the Coffenstein property. Mr. Coffenstein was required as a part of his settlement agreement with Marion County to build that earthen berm that we talked about. And so that, that eight foot to 10 foot high berm that is, you know, six to eight feet wide on the, along the, the mulching area provides a substantial sound barrier and then when you're, when, and he's, Marvin's planted several Leland Cypress trees and will be required to plant additional trees. The other, the other added factor that I would, I would point to is that the distance between the chipper grinder to the residences and the, and that distance is between, anywhere between 600 to 700 feet and as we all know, sound attenuates, it essentially diminishes over, over space. And with that, with that distance, that sound, once it hits those property lines is well below the Marion County noise standard requirements. The applicant purposely limits his, his production of mulch through grinding about four times a year in order to essentially try to accommodate, instead of grinding all the time, he's grinding, he's amassing the, the material and grinding it four different times of the year. We believe that's, that's more accommodating to the, to the surrounding properties as well. Ms. King is here this morning, I was not going to have her testify, but if you have specific questions with respect to the noise, noise study, what she did, what she found, be happy to have her come up and, and testify. Finally, conditions of approval. As noted earlier, your staff approved this application with nine conditions of approval. We've added eight additional conditions of approval based on, based on the noise analysis, based on our traffic study and traffic analysis that our traffic consultant came back with. And I believe that those conditions of approval, Austin, those been entered in the record?
Correct, they have.
Okay, great. So the additional conditions of approval, so we kept the, we kept the nine conditions that staff initially, when they initially approved this request, we kept all of those nine and then added eight additional ones. And some areas that we talked, we, we would like to condition this on is agreeing not to produce mulch and that would be the grinding between May 1st through June 15th when Adelman Peony Farms hosts their public events. We get it, they need, they need to have, they need to have a quiet environment, as quiet as possible, except for Brook Lake Road, but we're willing to not provide, you know, not do any mulching during that, during that time period, that would be a condition of approval. We would propose to permanently, permanently close the existing driveway on Brook Lake Road and instead take access off of 57th Avenue. We would need to get, we'd need to get permission from County Public Works, but we think that they would be able to do that. We proposed to widen 57th Avenue with asphalt going at least 22 feet back from Brook Lake Road and installing two foot gravel shoulders on both sides in order to accommodate the turning radiuses for the trucks that would be coming going. We heard a lot of testimony at the, at the hearings officer with respect to, to neighbors complaining about the trucks kind of tearing up the, the side of the, the right of way and we're proposed to address that and take care of that. So the proposed conditions of approval will effectively mitigate any potential impacts of the mulching operation. So I've got nothing further to add at this time, so if you have any questions of me with respect to the criteria and are addressing that and why we feel that, that we satisfy those criteria, I'd be happy to address that, otherwise at this time I'd, I'd welcome Marvin Coffenstein come up and, and provide you with his comments.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mark?
No.
Commissioner Cameron.
Mark, you said, Mr. Shipman, you said you added eight conditions, you decided three.
I know, I was just gonna ask Austin, where are those eight additional that I, I have not, I don't know.
I have a, Commissioner Bill, I have an exhibit that I'll, I'll provide you right now that shows all the conditions of approval.
That'd be very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're in, they're in the letter that looks like this.
Right.
Okay. That might be in the main file, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Marvin's coming up, not Billy? Is Billy gonna come later?
Yeah.
Okay, I assume you're just gonna roll your way up here since there's no order of operation on this sign and sheet. All right, for the record, introduce yourself, first, last name and address, please.
That'd be my home address or my?
Your, yeah, your home address and make sure you speak right into the microphone.
Okay.
Everybody on TV wants to hear you too.
Okay, all right. My name is Marvin Coffenstein from 5420 Calmia Drive, Northeast Kaiser, Oregon.
Thanks for being here.
Good morning. I'm the owner of Mountain View Tree Service, which provides various services including tree trimming and tree removal services. I am also a licensed certified arborist. I grew up in the foothills of Silverton on a family farm. Our family raised around 200 head of cattle and farmed around 1,000 acres of grass seed, flowers, and row crops. I loved the farm and always thought I would be a farmer, but as the youngest of a family of six, that wasn't an opportunity by the time I became of age. I still work closely though with my brother who now has the farm. We actually partner to provide well and firefighting services for the state and federal government during fire season. Not only do I feel like a farmer at heart, but I have a great respect for the farming community and have no intention of allowing my business to harm a farmer. Quite the opposite, I'm using my business to help farmers and ranchers. My operation in Brooks does exactly this. I provide a clean mulch for farmers and ranchers to use on their crops around their livestock. We also know, or we all know that we can find hog field at numerous places around, but one thing you can't find is affordable mulch that is clean of detrimental contaminants such as metal or other inorganic material that can harm livestock and crops. Our product won't have nails that can bed in the hooves of livestock and our material doesn't cost 20 to $30 a yard delivered. Our material is clean and free to the farmers. Rather than dumping our trimmings in landfills or various other areas that have a negative environmental impact, we reclaim the material for a great purpose. I realize that the neighbors are not the ones receiving this material, but regardless, we are more of a servant to the farming community rather than a detriment. That price is a steep price for the cattle farmers to pay for clean chips, for bedding and ground cover. And one of our recipients receives several thousand yards of this material every year, which that in itself would be a substantial financial burden to his business. So I rent or own several properties here in Oregon and also in Washington. One thing all my neighbors, unfortunately except a few around this property, would have to say about me is that I strive to be a good neighbor. I treat my neighbors the way I want to be treated. Whenever concerns have been raised, I have taken action to address these concerns and be as accommodating as possible. I've also made many accommodations at this Brook, Brook Lake Road property to reduce my impact on these neighbors. I have heard the occasional complaints over the last four years and have taken them to heart. When asked not to burn any material by Adelman, we stopped. When dust was mentioned, we provided a water truck for dust abatement. When Adelman complained that we were disturbing him during the most important times of his peony operation, we altered the timings of our grinding operation, so we are not grinding during that time. Although I will mention that we did grind for a few minutes this spring to do the noise study. But the string tremor from the Peony Farm, that the Peony Farm was using was recording more noise at the street than our grinder, so you can take that for what it's worth. Now that the earthwork and rock placement for the development of this property is finished, I'm confident that excessive noise won't be an issue. And the numbers don't lie, with both of the nearest residences 600 feet or more from any loud equipment, it is not possible for my operation to be a major noise, noise concern. According to some brief calculations based on a noise calculator I found online, a 121 decibel engine or machine is less than 60 decibels at the nearest home 600 feet away. At the nearest residential property line, which is approximately 400 feet away, it should be around 68 decibels. This number should be familiar because it is exactly what the noise study recorded. According to the manufacturer, the grinder used in this test, which is a Vermeer HG6000, is rated at a max rating of 121 decibels, one foot from the grinder. Also to be noted, while I was doing this test, I used medium sized chunks because they bounce around in the mill and they are by far the loudest thing and I wanted to make sure that the test was accurate. So since conducting this test, we have actually updated our grinder to a smaller and quieter grinder, which is a Peterson 2710. This grinder is rated at a max decibel rating of 100 decibels at the grinder. At the McCarrill property line, even without a berm to shield the noise, it should be just under 50 decibels. Again, I am confident that the noise from the loudest machine on my operation is not an issue. The opposition mentioned that we have, that we may have a negative effect on surrounding properties by transporting in insect pests and tree diseases. The main diseases have strict regular, regulations on how they are handled. This is put in place by the Oregon Department of Forestry and Oregon Department of Agriculture and we precisely follow these regulations. As a primary contractor for the city of Salem, Oregon Department of Transportation and many other counties and cities around, it is extremely important that we follow these regulations because it would jeopardize our opportunity to do business with some of these government agencies. As for the various unregulated plant diseases, our tree crews around Oregon and Washington create hundreds of yards of material daily that doesn't come to this property. Those ships are delivered by our medium duty trucks to residential, commercial, and farm properties. We, we acquire these contacts through a website called Chip Drop. I should say we, we acquire some of these contacts through a website called Chip Drop, which was created and used, and is used by arborists nationwide. The point is that these loads that are delivered by thousands of tree companies every day around the country, none are tested for pests and diseases and they are provided to thousands of homes across the country on a daily basis. The composting of this material The composting of this material is often enough to eliminate these concerns, or they are not a concern without the nutrient supply from the host plant they are affecting. In short, regulated plant material will not be coming to this property, therefore, this isn't a concern. Also, I don't know of any nursery stock around this property, so I'm not sure where that would even be a concern. Traffic was mentioned, but I can't imagine a couple trucks coming in and out of my property each day has nearly the effect on traffic as 1,000-plus cars from the general public visiting the Peony Farm across the street. Just to be clear, despite our differences, I just want to add this, because I don't want to be making it sound like I'm putting down the Peony Farm. I have tremendous respect for the Peony Farmer across Brook Lake Road. They have an amazing operation that is managed extremely well. I have no doubt that people from all around the country come to visit their beautiful farm, and I realize my operation may have briefly had a negative effect on their farm. But those few concerns were addressed immediately when brought to my attention. As a whole, we have changed our operations significantly in just the last year alone. The conditions on the property are entirely different from what they were. Also, to follow the county requirements, we have removed the equipment that is not related to farming or the mulching operation. At this point, I can't think of any way that I am a disturbance to either the Peony Farm across the street to the south, or the residential properties northwest of my property, or the Hazelnut Farm to the west, nor the farmland to the east of my property. I would be happy to answer any questions you guys have as well.
Ms. Cameron, do you have any questions?
Marvin, who pays you? Who are your customers? Are they farmers?
Residential and commercial, mostly. We do a little bit of work for farmers, but I couldn't say that they're a large amount of our customers. But we do a lot of work for Oregon Department of Transportation and City of Salem, City of Corvallis, various different government agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Marion County, he's one of our primary followers of trees in the canyon.
We just finished a job for Marion County last week.
It's okay to mention Marion County. We approved that contract. I have a couple of questions. Commissioner Cameron, do you have any questions?
Not right now.
Okay, so I have two questions for you. The first one is, I'm familiar with your business because we contracted with you as a county. How many trucks do you operate on a daily basis, and are they all coming in and out of this particular property, or do you have another location, like, commercial site somewhere that you store trucks and employees come and go from?
We have, I actually don't know the exact number, probably between 60 and 80 trucks, and they're spread between about probably seven or eight different yards in Oregon and Washington. This yard is, the thing that I find very comforting, having a farming background, and I remember when people would try to build houses up against our property or things like that when I was a kid, and we always opposed to that, and, but the thing that's comforting for me is the fact that my day-to-day operations do not run out of this property whatsoever. The only trucks that come out of this property on a day-to-day basis are used for transporting material, and that's the material that goes in and out of that property. So, as far as, you know, maybe 2% or 3% of my equipment is actually in and out of that property on a day-to-day basis.
Okay. And the second question is, and this was actually presented in one of the letters of opposition, and I'm curious about it, and I don't even know if this is possible, so Austin, if it's not, let me know. You have 9.72 acres total on this application, but you're suggesting that you only need two acres of use, so why wouldn't you just apply for use of just that portion of the property versus the entire property? And how do we restrict? And if that, if the application, I'm kind of looking at Brandon and Austin, has to be the full property, it would be my suggestion going forward, I don't know what the outcome is, that we would restrict on a conditional use, the amount of property. But my question is, is why wouldn't you limit it to the amount of acreage that you've stated is in use currently versus the entire property?
And I actually don't have an answer for why that was submitted that way because we have no intention of growing the footprint of our mulching operation. We did bring that up. Going back, though, Mark prepared that part, and I may not have had as much to do with that as I should have, but we do not intend to use the nine acres. The footprint that it's at right now is what it's going to stay at. So, and that's something that he can add to his list of items, stipulations, I believe he was saying.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that could be something we could condition, that it is reduced to that, two acres and change. Additionally, it is listed as the nine acres because typically when people submit an application, we just take the full property size, so giving you a description of the property doesn't necessarily mean we're approving him to use the full property, that's just kind of the way the application was written.
But unless we detail it, in an application approval, if that's the case, it would be the whole thing, unless we created a criteria.
Correct, it could be.
Okay. Steve, I see you.
Yeah, the condition number three proposed by the applicants does say that activities in storage for commercial mulching shall be contained within the approximately 1.5 acre area, so we could modify that condition if we felt that was insufficient, but I think that gets at what you're talking about.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Willis?
So Marvin, some of the folks that have submitted opposition to this proposal are lifelong farmers in that area and not particularly excitable people. So, if your operation's having such a minimal effect on the neighbors, have you talked to them? Like, why are people like Terry Belkey or Greg Bennett writing letters of opposition if there's no impact here?
Well, growing up on a farm, I briefly mentioned about how we resented change and we did not, you know, whatever activity happened or whatever things changed around our farm, we always resented that. In our area, it was subdivisions. There was a subdivision that went in just east of our property, our main home property there, when I was a child. I'm going back to the farming, the farming part of my life, but I honestly feel that the, what is coming from this, I do know that I had a negative effect on some of these farmers in the past, as I mentioned, Adelman with the smoke from the burning, which was, you know, that was cut off immediately, and from, I don't know if there was actually a dust issue, but it was mentioned, and then I believe there's one other thing, but I forgot what it was. Anyway, I believe that it is a resistance to change is the reason why. I thought about the Hazelnut Farmer for one, and I can't think of a possible way that we negatively affect him, but I also noticed that he had quite a bit of farmland in that area, and change is scary for a farmer. I know when we were farming, it was always the thought of, well, if they let this happen, what's next? You know, what else will they add? And so, that, I mean, I can't fault the farmer for having a legitimate concern, but the operation, I'm not running a tree service operation out of this, I am running a mulching operation that is benefiting the farmer. I can't think of, I mean, obviously, this is just my opinion, but I feel like my operation is benefiting more farmers than the farming operations around me are benefiting, just, you know, just to say it the way I see it.
Have you chatted with these folks that are opposed to it? Like, have you met them?
Very little, very little. Not really had much conversation.
Have you tried to reach out to them and they said that we don't want to meet? Or why have you not chatted with them that much?
I had a brief conversation with Mr. Adelman, I believe it was the father, and that was when we had burned something and the smoke was affecting his farm, and we just had a brief conversation. I said, no, I absolutely will not be burning out there, and I mentioned that's not neighborly and that's not my intention to be a neighborly individual, and that conversation was short. I have not had other conversations with the neighbors. I mean, the Hazelnut Farmer has not, has never mentioned anything that he objected to what I was doing. He is the only other person, other than that one phone call with Adelman, that I have had contact with.
What about, so you said this is only like 2% to 3% of your operation, that this isn't a significant part of what you do, but those lawyers behind you aren't cheap. Why are you spending a bunch of money and going through this process for an insignificant part of your business that the neighbors don't like?
The reason why I am doing this, there's a couple of reasons, actually. For one is, trees are my life and the environment is a very important thing to me, and if you think about it, not only, I mean, we work for contractors all the time, that they'll do the tree, like, we take the trees down, they haul the stuff off to landfills, rock quarry areas, stuff like that, and for us, it's reclaiming something I provide for the farmers, and also it's an inexpensive way for us to get rid of the material as well. The, when I say, when I say 2%, just to be clear, when I said 2%, I said 2% of our, like, our trucks going in and out of that area is part of the business. So, as far as that being 2% of the actual business, well, of course, it would be less than that when it comes to revenue, because there is no revenue from it, but, you know, it would be a small percentage, you're right.
So primarily, this is a cost savings to your business. Being able to process the treatments you're this way prevents you from having to pay someone else to take care of it. But why here? Why is this location the important place to do that?
Well, I own the property, to start with, and finding commercial property in our city, there are things that are, you know, issues in our city. I can stay 400 feet from a property line on this property, but I can't do that very easily in our city in a commercial zone. If you think about it that way, 400 feet, that means I have to have an 800-foot wide piece of property, which is around, quick calculations, don't quote me on this, probably four, three to four acres or five acres, and for good commercial property, I'm probably looking at somewhere in the four, three to four million dollar range, and this is a property I already own, so it just made sense to me since I already have the property, so.
But you have other properties, too, right?
Yeah.
You can't use those properties?
Geographic locations, like, I can't haul this stuff to Roseburg, to our yards in Roseburg or Walla Walla, or other areas in Washington and Oregon, and also my other properties are, again, too small to stay far from the property line, because the equipment does produce dust, it's just, it's not a 1,000-foot-long cloud of dust, it's 100, 200 feet maybe, and that there can all stay within my property if I'm using this property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cameron, do you have anything?
Not this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list of support, Mr. Dalto. And just to check, Emily, are you going to be testifying, or are you just signed up as a part of the posse?
Just part of the posse.
Thanks.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners and Staff. I'm Billy Dalto. It's, I'm an attorney for Mountain View Tree Service, and it's great to be here with you this morning, and I really appreciate the time and the opportunity that we've had to bring this issue before the commission, and thank you for allowing this to happen. I wanted to just address the code enforcement procedure, because I know it was an issue, a question that had come up with Commissioner Willis at the last meeting, and I wanted to give you a little bit of context because I think it's important to understand that process and how we arrived at this situation today. Mr. Klopstein, the residence, the property is a residence and a farm, it's personally owned by Mr. Klopstein, and so he received a personal citation from Marion County Code Enforcement back on May 29th, 2024, and the code enforcement violations alleged there was unlawful business use and there was an accumulation of debris. Those were the two conditions. And it's, that was May 29th, 2024, but it's important to note that code enforcement themselves hadn't been on the site previously to that for about a nine-month period. So, the last time code enforcement was on-site was August 22nd of 2023, which is actually almost two years from today. And I think you've heard some testimony and saw the photo from yesterday, the site conditions really have changed profoundly since then. Upon receiving the citation, Mr. Klopstein engaged professional land use counsel, Mr. Shipman, to address the zoning issues that we've been discussing, and also to file a conditional use permit application to address legalizing this use, which would, of course, then impact the code enforcement proceeding. The conditional use permit application was submitted on August 12th of 2024, and it was approved on November 3rd of that year. Excuse me, while we were working on the conditional use permit process with county staff, we were also working with the enforcement staff through your council to address the enforcement issues. At that point, the discussion about the code enforcement proceedings centered around two things. First, the resources required by county code enforcement to address the complaint, and also, second, the need to screen the operations from public view to address the visual impact. Those were the issues that we discussed, no other issues. Code enforcement and Mr. Klopstein agreed that the code enforcement proceedings could be addressed by paying an amount of money to address the investigative costs and also to create this protective berm, which you've heard about. Once these two conditions were satisfied, then the county would, code enforcement would refrain from further enforcement activities pending this land use process, which is continuing even through today. And that's exactly what happened. Mr. Klopstein received his approval from the county staff on the conditional use permit application on November 3rd of 2024, and the parties then agreed to a stipulated judgment a few days later on November 12th of 2024. So, stipulated judgment is just the agreement between county enforcement and Mr. Klopstein about how to resolve the citation. Mr. Klopstein promptly paid a $3,000 fine that he agreed to pay, and he just installed this dirt berm that you heard about and installed trees. And I think it's important to note that there's been substantial cost in installing that berm, it's over $80,000, and continues to accrue costs to perfect that. So, the action, and the action in the stipulated judgment, code enforcement action was stayed, so stopped, paused until May 12th, 2025. That's important because that was our discussion with county council to try to allow enough time for this land use proceeding to come to a resolution. And here we are, still working on this conditional use permit. So, I just want to conclude at this point by pointing out that the condition of the property today is very different than when we started this process, and I think you can see that in these past three years, or even the 14 months since the citation was issued, that we have, you know, worked very hard to comply with the request from the county, that the property now is in good shape for productive use going forward. And I just also wanted to say that Mr. Klopstein is willing to amend his list of conditions to just tighten up in the proposed conditions, that we would limit the use of the property to what he's using right now. So, that's not going to be an issue, we would work with the planning council to, the planning department to make that condition change. So, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any, otherwise, I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Dalto. Any questions? Okay. Thanks for being up here. Lindsay, do you want to present? Okay. All right, that looks like I have everybody for support. We're going to move to opposition. First signed up is Steve Adelman. Well, I, okay, does Steve Adelman, is he, this is my meeting, so are you gonna, who is Steve Adelman? Are you going to testify?
Yes, I am.
You just want to go after?
Yeah.
Mr. Weddle? Okay, Mr. Weddle, please come forward. Okay. Mr. Weddle, please come forward.
My name is Roger Weddle. I live at fifty six forty Ramp Street, Northeastern Brooks, nine seven three oh five.
Would you tell me the ramp, R A M P?
R A M P.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank the commission for allowing me to speak today. Uh, this has been on our minds for a long time, very short notice on this particular, uh, deal. And what I really want to address very, I'll be very brief, is the results of the noise study, okay? There isn't any day or time of, of the study whatsoever anywhere. And just a couple, Zone One, corner of the subject property. Zone One D is the northwest corner of my daughter's property. And Zone Three is my property. Uh, Fifty Seventh Avenue is my daughter's property with three great grandkids, seven, three, and one years old, with chickens, roosters, and crows. And it states in here that with the kids playing outside and a chicken clucking or rooster crowing or within about twenty decibels of what that grinder makes. I'd like to see that. It's my property.
Have you heard this grinder?
Oh, I've heard this grinder. He shakes the windows in our houses. This is not right. This is a faulted, uh, test. It's not right. There's no part of it.
Your opinion is that this is very loud?
It is my opinion that we can't live in peace. I've been out there thirty years and I have never. When Mr. Adelman does his, uh, harvest, I've been there thirty years and not one time have I heard a piece of equipment on his property. And he's right across the street from the grinder. You can hear the grinder at Portland Road and Brooklake Road. It honestly, I mean, somebody needs to look into that. This is flawed. Uh, it says that, that I have sixty decibels at my house. And the only thing I've ran all summer is my air conditioner and my bedroom window. And that's the truth. I don't make noise. I'm, maybe my, uh, little John Deere rider, but that's it. We live in farmland to start with and farmers needed equipment. It's been that way for years, our lives. They, they have to have equipment to do it. When the farmers across the street from my children and my house come and they bale their hay, do whatever they do, my grand, great grandchildren are standing out on the edge of their lawn waving at the boys going through because they can see them. And they know what they're doing and they're not afraid of them. When the grinder fires up, those kids run to the house, go inside, and have to listen to it in their house. It's not fair.
That's the biggest impact on your life is the noise, is that it?
It is going to, our quality of life is gone if this goes through. It really is. And if, if be needed before this is approved or denied, I would appreciate it if possibly any of you could come out when they're grinding and stand in my driveway, my daughter's driveway next door to me, or Mr. Adelman's place across the street. It's, this is flawed. It's really flawed. And.
Mr. Weddle, can I ask you a question?
You bet.
So I'm looking at Google Earth, trying to understand exactly the proximity of your home versus this property. And I can see on the Google Earth that there's two substantial farms that surround the fifty seven eleven Brooklake Road, which is Mr. Klopstein's property. So it looks like your property on Ramp, essentially, the property in question is here and you're up here. So are you kind of, and I don't know the direction of this, northeast, southwest, and I can't actually show it to you. But are you like above the property, adjacent to it?
I'm north.
You're north and I see fifty seventh?
And I'm, I'm on the corner of fifty seventh and Ramp.
Which looks like it kind of dead ends to the wheat field?
Mm-hmm.
And it's so are you dead, are you on the dead end portion by the wheat field?
Yeah, I'm the last house on the south side of Ramp Street.
And then you have multiple houses on your property?
I have a, a shop in my house.
So is the property, the, the, mm, structure, I'll call it, that's closest to Brooklake, to this property, your shop?
No.
No.
Well, on my property, the property behind me is my daughter's property.
Eighty eight ninety five. Is that your daughter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, and the property line from what I could see for their property comes into about ten feet across inside where my property line is on the other side of the street.
Okay. So your, does your daughter have a shop also? Okay. So her shop is the closest structure to the property?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Carry on.
Okay. On a lighter note, no, I'm not going to say it. I, uh, I appreciate your time.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay. Now, Mr. Adelman, are you going to present? Wonderful. Thank you. For the record, please introduce yourself and your name and, full name and address.
Good morning. Uh, Steve Adelman, uh, sixty two hundred Brooklake Road.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm Steve Adelman. Um, I'm property owner at sixty two hundred Brooklake Road, as well as, uh, fifty four seventy Brooklake Road. As well as the managing member of Adelman Peony Gardens at fifty six ninety Brooklake Road. Um, today I'm also representing my parents, Jim and Carol Adelman, um, of fifty six ninety Brooklake Road. Uh, they're unable to attend. My father's having, uh, a medical procedure today. Which is the, the property I grew up on, um, and still, um, operate and am at every day for the last fifty five years. My father's family, um, moved to the Jervis area in nineteen hundred and began farming. We still own that property today. My mother's family moved to Brooks in nineteen fifty, began farming then. So let's just say that I've got some farming in my blood. Farming in Oregon is very important. Um, Oregon protects farming, uh, at least has. Um, Oregon protects farming through law. The traffic study that was done, um, tried to compare Mr. Klopstein's equipment to my farming equipment, um, which is not a fair comparison. They use a picture of my farming equipment, which I take, uh, issue with. There was a picture of my farming equipment from last year across the road from the subject property. My farming equipment in the picture gets used about seven days out of the year. Mr. Klopstein's equipment, um, that he has on property gets used three hundred and sixty five days a year. Contrary to the discussion about the grinder, he's moving trucks and logs in and out six or seven days a week, year round, which is the issue I have. Uh, the sound is an issue, which I take a lot of issue with. But he's moving trucks in and out constantly. Early, late, nine thirty at night, Saturdays, Sundays.
How does that, that's, that's a big impact to you?
That's, that's, um, he's trying to compare farming to a commercial business. So farming, we work around the clock during harvest time, but not all the time, not year round. And part of the proposed conditions of his use was working during certain business hours and certain days. So you would think that during this period of time that he's had, between the last denial and this, um, that he would follow the rules that were proposed during the last proposal, which was working during certain business hours?
In your opinion, is that that hasn't happened?
That has not happened. It's not my opinion. That is fact.
Okay.
That is fact. Nine thirty at night, Saturdays, Sundays.
What, what's happening at that point, at those hours, in your opinion?
Semi trucks coming in and out constantly, lowboys, excavators. I'd like to submit this to record.
Please.
Lowboys unloading in the middle of Brooklake Road, which I have pictures of right here. Here's another copy.
Can you tell, tell us how, uh, you're negatively impacted by this? How does this harm kind of your, your experience as a farmer in this area?
Well, um, my concern is, as commissioners, you're going to open the floodgates.
I'm missing one.
So. Well, first, I, let, let me step back for a second. The chip thing is a ruse, in my opinion. You have one letter from one small dairy farm in, on record, to my recollection. Where are the rest of the chips going? Why are there, why is someone else not here? Or why are there no more letters? Where's the rest of these chips going? If, if my recollection's correct, the letters had some, I mean, like six loads. So where are these precious chips going?
Well, just because we only received one letter to document, it doesn't mean that there's not other recipients of the chips. I don't know.
But if it's that important that he has so many attorneys here and so on, why, why are there no more letters or no more support for that?
I think you're, you're suggesting your approach versus his approach. I don't think we should get into that. I just think we want to know specifically, uh, what your opinion is.
I'll move on.
Okay.
So if you approve this, then what's going to stop the next tree service from going and buying a cheap property, which is ag EFU property and doing the same thing? How are you going to stop them?
Well, every property on EFU that doesn't do exclusive farm use has to go through the same process that this gentleman's going through, which is a conditional use. It would be, let me finish. It's okay. I, I understand the frustration that you're experiencing. I own a farm outside of state and, and I have lots of neighbors. So I just, I, uh, we want to hear you. But, but to answer your question, every single farm in this county must go through the same process. And that's why we have code enforcement to try to help people fall within the law and to be neighborly about their operations. We can't be on every property all the time. Obviously, this property didn't go through the proper procedure originally, and that's why we're here and that's why code enforcement was called. So.
So, so is your, um, it's, it sounds like your, your opinion is that tree service is not essential to farm use.
Absolutely.
This is not a service being provided to farmers. This is not a customer of farmers. That, that's sort of a legal question. I'm more interested in just sort of the practical question of, you know, you, you also have paid money to lawyers. You're also here. This is obviously important to you. Why are you spending your valuable time and your money opposing this? Is it because this operation has harmed your quality of life, your business? Or is it, is it purely just sort of a, um, not that it's, not just, but is it, is it purely sort of a legal concern about the laws around farm use? Or is it that this is, this is a problem for you?
It, the property that he's on, um, I believe could, will never be returned to farm use. So he's gravelled the two point whatever acres. That ground is destroyed forever.
And your view is he did that without?
Absolutely.
The right to do that?
Yeah.
In violation of the EFU zoning?
In my opinion, he purchased the property, and did all of this with the full intent of using it for this, um, using it for his tree service, knowing full well that he was not in compliance with the law. He stated that himself. He bought it, uh, started burning. Um, thought he could burn his debris. That's under previous testimony, his own personal words. And, and I will step back and say, um, his discussion with my father was because my father called his office. He has never reached out to any neighbors, ever.
Is, is there a, um, can you imagine, I realize this is somewhat speculative, but can you imagine a way that he would operate that would be beneficial to local farmers? And can you imagine a conversation or an agreement between the local community and Mr. Klopstein that you could see his use of this land being compatible with what the rest of the community is doing as far as farming goes?
Not based on discussions with neighbors. Um, unfortunately, I did not, I, I got a lot of support talking to neighbors on my side. This was very short notice for a hearing. Um, all the farmers, uh, with the exception of Greg Bennett, were very busy.
That is a bad time for farmers, I know.
Uh, very bad, very bad.
Yeah.
Um, and very short notice. So, um, I talked to a lot of people that were very upset about what's going on.
Yeah.
But they're in the middle of grass seed harvest right now. And there was, uh, nobody that said, hey, I, I don't care what's going on there.
But how about you? I mean, I mean, could you see, could you see somebody making mulch on a piece of property in a way that you would be okay with or not really?
Not, not really. I mean, I, I think if it's allowed, then you may as well just go ahead and change the zoning in the area. And allow us to do something else with our property. So, um, some of my other comments were, which was brought up in the, in the study, um, in the traffic study by his own person was the fact that the property is quite overgrown. The neighbors commented about that. Um, it's the worst looking property in the area. So being a tree service, I would expect that he might take better care of the property. Uh, that's noted right in his own survey. Actually several times. So, um, so I was quite shocked that his own survey would make comment of that. But, uh, a lot of the neighbors also, um, commented on that. They assumed the house was abandoned. Um, they didn't know anybody lived there even because it, it looked so overgrown and, uh, and out of sorts. So, um, so, so, um, I guess in closing for me, um, I would just say. so, I guess in closing for me, I would just say, you know, Mr. Klaufenstein says he wants to be a good neighbor. He's, he's never reached out to anyone. He doesn't try to be a good neighbor by following any kind of hours at all. And does not care for his property at all. So I would ask that you guys please protect our farms and deny this request. So thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here. All right, Mr., is it Roten?
Yes.
Great. Please come forward.
Hello, Board of Commissioners. My name's Nick Roten, and for the record, I am an attorney for Adelman Peony Gardens LLC. And my mailing address is sixteen forty-four Liberty Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon, nine seven three oh two. As you heard, my client is directly south of the subject property. And they oppose this conditional use permit and ask that the Board of Commissioners deny the application. Came, come to the same conclusion that the hearings officer did after receiving evidence on the matter. So to that end, I submitted a letter in advance of the hearing that lays out certain legal reasons and factual reasons for denial of the application. I also, just as kind of a housekeeping matter, asked that certain things within the planning division file be included in the record of this proceeding. I assume that they would be, but just because I didn't have time to run down and hand deliver them to the planning department prior to the hearing. I've got hard copies here and they would already have them, but I will hand them to whoever the appropriate person is at the conclusion of my remarks, just so there's no dispute about what's in or out of the record, as that's my burden here, providing this argument. So before I get into some of the specifics and the weeds on some of the legal things, and you've heard a lot about some of the factual arguments as well, it is helpful to zoom out and kind of frame the decision you have, and some of this you've already heard. But there's no dispute that prior to this application, there was a code enforcement problem. The applicant is the owner of Mountain View Tree Services. He was using the property with equipment for his commercial, non-farm business. He was cited for that amongst other things. Stipulated judgment says what it says. And this application was filed, and I don't think I'm putting words in his mouth, as a way to cure non-compliance and attempt to come into compliance with the Marion County Code and the land use regulations, both statewide and that are implemented by your guys' code. That is important for you guys to understand because we're here in a situation where the applicant, who's been well-served by his counsel, if I needed a land use matter, I would probably hire Mark Shipman, right? Okay. But they're in the, but they are in the unenviable position where they're having to reverse engineer a legal basis to allow this operation to continue in some form. And they, you know, it's a little bit different maybe than it was two years ago, but substantively, it's essentially the same. And conceptually, they're in a position where they're having to put lipstick on a pig, make chicken salad out of you-know-what, you know, use whatever terminology you'd like. But the, the simple conclusion that I'm going to ask you guys to come to, which is what the hearings officer came to after considering the case law, the argument, the evidence, is that it just simply, before you can even get to the impacts, and they submitted hundreds of pages of documents and studies, that's important, and I'll respond to that, but before you even get there, just fundamentally, it does not fit within the commercial activity in conjunction with use framework to be a conditional use in the EFU zone. Important laws, the legislature and the county's taken a lot of action in that regard and creating that framework. So let's talk about why, hopefully don't get too boring. So number one is, you know, basically, there's four things I want to go through. They're kind of outlined in my letter that I'll summarize here today. The hearings officer correctly decided that the proposed operations, and I guess previous operations, are not essential to the practice of agriculture, which is what your code says is required, and that derives from state law. Number two, the hearings officer correctly decided that the proposed, and I suppose previous, operations are not primarily a customer or supplier of farm uses, also as required by the code and state law. The hearings officer found that the proposed operations would fail, and previous operations would fail the farm impacts test. And then number four, I would ask you to decide, and the hearings officer didn't reach this conclusion, she didn't decide yes or no. I would decide that you use your discretion under the code to deny this application based on new facts that have arisen since the hearings officer decision and since the original approval. So number one, the Marion County Code, consistent with state law, says that the commercial activity has to be something, and the products or services have to be essential to the practice of agriculture. So what does that mean? Essential, vague term, lawyers get to argue about it. Here, I would say, even if you look at the application and the proposed use and characterize it as narrowly as they do, and I guess I'll get to that in my second point, but just take them at their word, that this is a mulching operation, it has to be something that's essential to the practice of agriculture. So something being essential is not literal. This is not common meaning. This is a legal term of art that's been defined in the case law. It derives from a case called City of Sandy v. Clackamas County from nineteen ninety-four and subsequent cases after that. And I agree with counsel that there is no single test. You know, if the hearings officer said it's particularly unique, I've said that. That's one formulation of the standard, but there is no single formulation. Instead, the case law says you have to look at the cases, and there's a certain concept that you have to get to, and I'm not making this up. There's direct quotes, and I can give them and I cite to them. But essentially, what you need to find in order to be a type of product that either has a close relationship with agriculture, or sufficient connection, or again, there's all these particularly unique, it has to be a type of product by its nature that is, you have to find that it's not something that potentially a large number of customers that are not farm users would use. So it's kind of, that's in the negatives, so I know that's kind of confusing. But essentially, if it's something, so the City of Sandy case itself goes through this and says, farmers use gasoline, farmers need to eat. Those things are in fact essential and, you know, you can't farm without them in a literal sense, but they're not essential in that they don't have some kind of special relationship to farming. And the way you find that, conceptually, is you ask, okay, who's using it? So, you know, the cases, and the City of Sandy talks about this in later cases, you know, tractor supply store. Yeah, some non-farmers buy tractors and use them, but generally speaking, farmers use tractors. So that is something that has a special relationship or a close connection to agriculture. And it's not just merely something that's helpful or needed or indispensable even to farming. So to that end, legally, they're really hanging their hat on the fact that they've got evidence in the record that some farmers use this product. I think you could dispute, my client would say that not, it's not widely used, but some farmers do use it. There is evidence in the record to say that. And then that they're only going to be distributing it to farms. So that's not enough to get you there. Otherwise, you could have gas stations on EFU lands that, you know, we're only going to serve farmers, condition of approval. You know, farmers need gas. That, there, there is more to the analysis than just, you know, farmers, it's helpful to us and we use it. So I don't take my word for it. So again, there is a Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba case from nineteen ninety-two. It does predate the City of Sandy analysis, but it is a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use case. And they found a mulching operation and wood byproducts service did not have the characteristics required to be a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. And as part of that, they look at, you know, I think it's page ten of the opinion, they say, you know, certain farms use it, but it's not the type. And that's a direct quote, and I think I cite to it in my brief, a product that's used in farming. And I know, and they say, well, you know, supporting evidence, you know, the applicant didn't come forward with evidence to the contrary, saying, you know, because they're like, you didn't, you weren't, you didn't have enough records that you're selling it mostly to farmers, this, that, and the other. There is more to it than just you selling it just to farmers and, and farmers find it helpful, again, because otherwise, gas stations and whatnot would be allowed on EFU land as a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. You look to the type of the product or service, and it has to be essential, and that's, that's how the concept plays out. And, you know, I, I know the board is, I guess I'll just add as a small aside, the board is, you know, you guys do a lot of different things, but you, you, you do address these types of cases. Notably, I cite to it, there's a Marion County case from, came before you guys, I think in July of twenty twenty-one, the educational experience case. I watched the, I watched the film on that, you know, right, in preparation of this hearing. You know, an accomplished out-of-state, or not out-of-state, out-of-town lawyer came in and was basically saying, City of Sandy case, you know, no, ignore that, that's old news, you know, this, that, and the other. And I remember at the time, county council was like, eh, I don't, you know, I'm not so sure about that. And it is true that at that time, there had been some Board of Appeals cases that didn't reference City of Sandy because it just wasn't an issue in those particular cases. But I think that Marion County, Luba was, said, no, City of Sandy is binding law, and not everything is essential. You have to be careful in what you deem, this is a quasi-judicial hearing, you guys are elected officials, but also in this case, you are your judge hat. There are only certain things that legally you can deem to be essential. And that's not one of them. Luba's already said that. So I would say, as a threshold matter, that's kind of a fatal flaw in, in the application. Before you can even get to the second point, which, the Marion County Codes, and again, state law, City of Sandy as well, says the commercial activity must be primarily customer or supplier of farm uses. So there's a couple of things to unpack there. Conceptually, this is where you get the call of spade, a spade. First of all, you have to look at the commercial activity. So what is the commercial activity? There, I don't know that there's case law that says giving it away for free, but it seems that not a commercial activity. I think there are things you can do that are, don't bring in money that are a commercial activity because they have an economic impact. So I don't necessarily want to go that far and say as a matter of law, you can't find, there's no commercial activity here. But you do look at the commercial activity. You have to choose, what do we characterize as the commercial activity? And I disagree that, I don't think I cited any, but I know there's one stoller case where they, in the commercial, there's a million stoller cases. But one of them, they're fighting about, you know, is this a tasting room associated with the vineyard, this, that, and the other. You do have to choose what to characterize, otherwise, again, I think Mr. Belkey might have said in his letter, you know, if Walmart says we have
wheelbarrows.
blueberries, you know, does that make Walmart? Yeah, so, so, and again, this is where the lawyering comes in, and he's got great lawyers. You know, they characterize it as a mulching operation. Well, respectfully, that's not what the facts show, and that's your job. And I will say, just I guess to, you know, staff had originally approved this application. They did a great job through their initial vetting of it. Just for the record, all people who utilize land use in the area, we always prefer working with Marion County because you guys are the best as far as working with people to get things done. But I remember, so there's some, you know, this is in the record that the applicant had submitted on October thirty-first, it was a supplemental response to their original filing. And it basically has some emails, I think, between Alex Cypher and Mr. Shipman. And it says basically like kind of the back and forth, and basically, because I think there's some extra scrutiny put on this, given the circumstances. And it's copied and pasted. It looks like an email from Alex says, "Show me how this is less of a timber and tree debris storage yard for a tree removal business." And that this location's primary purpose is for the mulch production. I mean, that's kind of hitting the nail on the head. They did provide some additional evidence, and I think kind of, and at that time, there was no contrary evidence to provide further context, which is what happened at the hearings officer stage and shows the process is working. So they did get an approval, but that really is the question, and that's your guys' job, is the hearings officer's job, and I don't know if it's in the record, but is to figure out what is actually happening here. And I say, look at the undisputed facts. One, the mulching doesn't make money. His money comes from commercial and residential activity. Two, all the debris and byproducts comes from Mountain View Tree Services. It's not like he's, he's buying, you know, bulk trees and then making it into a mulch and then doing something with it like a normal commercial activity would be doing. Two, the Mountain View Tree Services equipment is stored on the property, and that comes and goes every day, as my client would testify. The mulching, the actual grinder is, you know, I think there's some dispute. They say it would occur four times a year. And it's like, how do you define four times a year? It's like four days or four periods of time within a year. I've heard that concern, and that was raised at the hearings officer level. But nevertheless, they, on their own undisputed facts, mulching occurs four times a year, yet Mountain View Tree Services equipment's coming and going every day. The, they're storing the, the tree debris that they need to do something with, instead of paying somebody to do something with. They're storing it there, benefiting the business every day of the year. So to put it simply, as the hearings officer found, and as is contend you should find, this mulching operation, if that's how you want to characterize it, is only here because of Mountain View Tree Services, which again, I think there's plenty of evidence in the record. It's a great company. I think my clients even used them before. We take no issue with the company. But that type of activity, and this is essentially a property that's, that supports that activity, that is the primary commercial activity, is it's further into Mountain View Tree Services. It doesn't belong on EFU land. It doesn't belong as a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. And I guess the last point of that is that the Land Use Board of Appeals and the Court of Appeals have called this type of situation, because this isn't the first time, the tail wagging the dog because you've basically got a non-farm, commercial business activity, and they're trying to shoehorn it in to an EFU property by, you know, really emphasizing that, you know, thing that has some tenuous connection with farm use. Here, it's, you know, we get free mulch from farmers. Well, no, look at the big picture. It's, this is Mountain View Tree Services, they're storing their equipment there, coming and going every day. So we would ask that, you know, when you, in, in context of the facts, as they're, you know, they've been presented today, and also I think we had additional testimony at the hearings officer stage that's in the order. We'd ask that you find that it's not the primary activity, the commercial activity of the property is not primarily a customer or supplier of farm uses. The, the commercial activity is in fact the tree trimming business, and the mulching that occurs is incidental to the primary purpose. So assuming you can meet those thresholds, which I would contend that you cannot, then you move into the farm impacts test, and that's when we start getting into the weeds on, you know, how loud is it? Is it not loud? Is traffic bad? Is it not loud? Or is it, is it significant? Is it not significant? This is something that's in the Marion County Code, but it also has a state law component to it. The Marion County Code's actually more protective than state law. So for instance, in the noise context, it's not limited to just farming. Any land uses in the area, it's relevant to your guys' analysis. If there's a significant impact, it would fail the criteria. And I would also note, the Oregon, I have in the briefing, the Oregon Supreme Court said something significant, it's a low bar. So it doesn't even have to be a major impact. It just, so when something's a significant impact, it's, you know, I don't, you could say it's a notable impact, it's an important impact, but it's not, doesn't need to be some, you know, like, oh, this is a huge, major impact. I believe major is what they compare it to in the Oregon Supreme Court opinion. They're trying to protect farmers. So if it has an impact, I mean, you got, your, your ears got to go up on that. So here, I think there's plenty of evidence that this does have a major impact. We've had people testify both today and at the hearings officer stage that, you know, this is rattling their windows and heard half mile away. This is not associated with farm use. You know, it's not comparable. That's a false conflation based on how we would contend the facts are. You don't need to, the, my understanding of the Luba case law would be, you don't need to, you know, they've submitted studies. You don't need to rely on those studies. You have to, you may need to explain why you don't rely on those studies. You know, I would say maybe a couple of things to consider in addition to just the conflicting evidence and who's more credible. The sound study that was submitted The sound study that was submitted was prepared by Lindsay King, who I think we can stipulate is very smart, capable, former Marion County planner. I, I guess I would just point out that I don't know what her qualifications are as far as the science of conducting a sound study. You know, is the equipment calibrated correctly? There's certain calculations and assumptions that are made in there. I, if I, as an attorney, you tell me go to a sound study, I'm not gonna, you know, is that finding going to be scientifically sound? I don't. So I would just say, that is one thing to consider, and then as it relates to the traffic study, again, I don't even know that you really even need to get to this, into the weeds, based on just the fundamentals of the application. But if you look at page five of their exhibit C, you know, they basically say that they, like, when they're doing the, I think the, it looks like the engineer who was out there that did the report was counting himself, but as it relates to, like, kind of historically looking at the impacts of property, they took the applicant's word for it. So again, you know, that, it is what it is, we've got people who are not, so, you know, my client would say one thing, they say one thing, but we've also got people who are not affiliated with either of us, who are here talking about the sound, so I would just point that out as well. And then the last thing I would say, I guess before getting my conclusion, I appreciate you indulging me by hearing me out on all this, is that it's pretty clear in the case law and in your own code, as you're well aware, Marion County has the discretion to deny a land use application, even if all the conditions are met. So even if they would otherwise qualify, if you feel like it's an issue, and I know that's maybe paraphrasing a bit, but it's cited, based on non-compliance with the code, probably a better way to put it. Well, here, I would contend that the applicant, I think, basically by his own admission and based on my client's testimony, has continued to operate on the property, even after the hearings officer denied his application on March 28th, and even after his stipulated judgment with Marion County had expired on May 12th. So even if he was under, you know, assumption, mistaken assumption that that gave him authority to do that, he's continued to do it since then, so I think we have legitimate concerns that any condition of approval that's imposed is not going to be adhered to, and that's based on the past conduct of the property, and other factors that you, that are in the record for you to consider. So I would ask that you exert, if nothing else, and again, I don't even think you need to get to this, but even assuming you found that this was essential, even if you found that the commercial activity is what they say it is, even if you found that, you know, there were not significant impacts to the property owners, the neighboring land uses, you could still say, you know, I don't know, I'm a little concerned that Marion County's going to have to utilize resources in the future on compliance issues. So, you know, that is a concern that our, my clients have, I think that's a concern that the neighbors have, and I think that's something that you all should consider here today. So in closing, I would just say that this is something that was filed to hear an enforcement action, they're trying to put a square peg in a round hole, it just doesn't fit, so that's even setting aside the impacts. You know, and again, I think we have a lot of respect for his business operations, but as Mr. Bennett from the Farm Bureau would say, as other people would say, there's other properties that you could use, and you don't need to use this property. You know, I know there's, having, working in real estate, I know a lot of commercial real estate brokers, I could find them a suitable alternative site. So I, I really don't think that it's absolutely necessary for this property to be used, it may be more convenient, but it's not compliant with the law. Oregon land use laws are extremely protective of EFU land, and this just simply doesn't fit the criteria. So with that, I will provide, so I guess some, I guess I'm open for questions, I don't know if you have any.
Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions? Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna, take a, do you want to take a quick break?
Just stand recess.
We're gonna stand in recess for five minutes. Oh my gosh. Would you like to come back up, sir? Great.
Is that it for the opposition?
Uh, yes, well, signed up.
Okay.
Yep.
You back on the record?
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you so much. So I think Mr. Rotten gives me too much credit.
Thank you.
He's, he's very capable as well. I want to talk about a couple, a couple of items. You know, we, we are looking at this from two very different viewpoints, both Nick and the hearings officer. And the hearings officer bought into Nick's argument, she did, and that's why we're here, is because I don't believe that, that her interpretation of the case law, her interpretation of the code and statutes is accurate, it's just not. And so, we're not talking about trying to cite a gas station, or trying to cite a tractor supply store out on EFU ground, we're not. This isn't what this application's about. And I thought it was interesting that Nick commented on what a great job that staff did, and they did, they do a great job. And Nick's right, Marion County's, it's, it's my favorite jurisdiction to work in, because they're, 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 they're quick, they're responsive, they're, they're reasonable and appropriate to work with. And I thought it was interesting that Nick had so much, so much great comments about what a thorough job that staff did, and if your staff did such a thorough job, then why is Nick and the hearings officer second guessing what they did? So what I would say is this, is that Nick made a couple of comments with respect to case law. One is the Chauncey case, that's the 1992 case, we identified that in our, our letter to you on July 18th. Chauncey did not hold that mulching operations, as a matter of law, can't qualify as a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use, but rather, what Chauncey held is that the evidence in that record was insufficient to establish whether qualified. And if you compare that to the evidence in this record, is that we believe that we've provided substantial evidence, so we don't advertise or sell to the general public, there's, there's not a wide range of potential customers or non-farm users, like there were in the Chauncey case. We've provided evidence that the amount of mulch delivered is upwards of 2,400 to 3,200 cubic yards of mulch. We've provided the affidavits from the local farmers that are saying that this is necessary and essential for their operation. So this case is very different than, than that of Chauncey. And the other case that he identified was the Marion County case, which you may or may not be familiar with, with respect to the, the ag, the ag career. And Luba held that it was too remote, too speculative. But the mulching operation in the Klopinstein matter directly benefits farm operations. There's a direct link, there's a direct connection there, there, that's that causal relationship that we, that the case law is looking for, and that we were, that we've been talking about. So it benefits their, their cattle operations, as we've identified, and so it's not, it's not tenuous, it's, we're not trying to, as, as Nick said, we're not trying to cite a tractor farm supply in an EFU zone. Mr. Klopinstein has done a substantial amount of work since the initial Code Enforcement Office claim citation came in. A substantial amount of the debris was removed from the site, the site has been cleaned up. I think if you take a look at the photograph from yesterday, compared to maybe photographs that, that Code Enforcement had, there's been a substantial change. You know, this is a, this is a good request, it's not perfect, but no land use case is. However, this application does satisfy the mandatory approval criteria in, in the Marion County code and in Oregon law. We are primary supplier farm uses, the mulch produced on, on the property is essential for the, for the practice of agriculture. The noise for the mulching operation, we don't believe, based on the, the noise study, will significantly impact surrounding properties. These trees are not an issue, they're not going to be impacted, traffic is not an issue. The proposed conditions of approval will adequately mitigate the potential impacts to the surrounding properties. And I believe they provide appropriate sideboards within which to ensure that the applicant operates in a manner that is the least disruptive to surrounding property owners. So one of the other, other items that I'd like to add as a potential condition of approval, and this was, this, Marvin mentioned this, in that he bought a new, he bought a new grinder, a smaller grinder, a grinder that's more quiet than the, the previous grinder that the noise study was based on. The new grinder is at, is at 100 decibels, versus the other grinder was at 120 decibels. So the new grinder that he has is, is even quieter than the other grinder. And what I would, I would urge the board to do is approve our conditions of approval, approve the application, add additional condition of approval that requires that he use that Peterson 2710 grinder in his operation, and he not use the former grinder in his operation. I'm happy to address any questions that you may have, otherwise, thank you for your consideration and your time.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Shipman?
Steve.
Steve. Make sure, is the green light on?
I believe so, yes.
Yep, okay.
In the proposed conditions, proposed condition eight that you submitted today, you made a slight change from the letter conditions you proposed earlier, and I was just wondering if you could comment on that. The previous proposal was no parking or storage of vehicles or equipment in the county right of way, but you deleted equipment. Was that an intentional thing, and if so?
No, that's, we can, we can add equipment back in there.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
Thank you, Steve.
Madam Chair.
Just one minute, please, sorry. Yes, sir.
During the public hearing, you referenced Google Maps, I'm not sure whether that was officially entered into the record or not, but I want to ask the parties if they have any objection to us entering a Google Maps picture of half mile radius from the property into the record.
No objection.
Okay.
No objection.
Okay, then we'll go ahead, hearing no objection, we'll include that as part of the record, just to make sure.
Right, in the future, it would be very helpful. We always Google Earth, well, not always, but more often than not, and I, I'll just say for the record, I'm also using MapQuest and Google Earth in this particular situation on both tabs, because 57th Avenue does not appear on Google Earth.
Okay. Are there any objections from the parties on MapQuest?
Okay. Just to be totally transparent, I wanted to see what we were talking about.
Madam Chair, I have a question for our staff.
Brandon, would you, just Brandon, would you just?
I'd like both of you, yeah.
Would you please come forward and just be up here?
I'll ask it to you, Austin, first of all, he's coming up. One of the criteria in the code is that the commercial activity must enhance the farming enterprises of the local agricultural community to which the land hosting that commercial activity relates. How do you understand that?
So that, if I can describe it maybe using an example of another commercial activity. So let's think of a John Deere tractor and repair area. So the land that the tractor repair area is on is farmland, and it is repairing, servicing and selling tractors. Well, those tractors actively then go harvest and till and work on those other EFU lands that are adjacent or in the county or in Oregon. So that commercial activity that's happening is directly enhancing farming enterprises because it's supplying tractors and repairing them and providing service, so they don't have to go into a city for that service. In this case, it is how is the whole mulching operation, how is what is being brought to that site and then leaving that site and the operation having at that site, how is that enhancing the local farming area or the enterprise?
I guess the part that I'm wondering is this local agricultural community. I mean, would Burns be local? Like how local, I guess that's sort of the part, the question that I have is this seems to suggest some sort of proximity to the location. Is that not the case?
No, that is the case.
Would Southwest Washington be local? Would Idaho be local? What is local?
Steve also has his hand up.
I can address that because I actually briefed a case on this.
Perfect.
That was not cited, I was disappointed because it's more recent than any of the other cases that were cited. But when I was in private practice last year, and generally within the state of Oregon is considered within the local area, and there are some administrative rules that reference like a county that's adjacent, which wouldn't apply here, but if you were in like Mownoma County, then Clark County, Washington, that sort of thing.
Okay. But we also have the authority to interpret our own code, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, in this situation, I believe you have the authority to interpret the code and the law to go either direction on this application.
Okay. Okay. Brandon, do you have anything to add on that question? No, okay, I brought you up here for nothing.
You may as well stay.
Well, maybe one thing that I would just say, because I think both parties took your names in vain as staff, I'll just tell you my sort of perspective on your role, and I think you guys did a great job. I know I'm only one commissioner, but I'll just kind of explain sort of how I understand, and we've had this conversation, where I, you know, part of your role is as regulators, right? But we've had this conversation of I don't want our regulators to be adversarial with our customers. So when someone comes into our office, I want our staff to try to help our citizens of Marion County accomplish their dreams. That's what I want, right? So my hope, and I think that's really what's happened here, is for our staff to, when they receive an application, look at ways that they can get to yes. Now, I think the rest of the process, the hearings process being here, that's an opportunity for the community to provide additional evidence. So I think you can have a situation, sometimes you have a situation where staff has all the evidence, they make a decision, and I look at it and say, gosh, they really got it right. But sometimes staff makes a decision, they did a good job on that decision, they tried to get to yes, and then additional evidence comes afterwards in the hearings process, and this body might come to a different conclusion. So just because you guys were mentioned by the parties in this case, I just want you and the community here that I think you guys did a great job regardless of kind of the decision that we make as a body here, because I want folks who come to Marion County to feel like our team, whose job it is to enforce regulations, make sure people are following the law, are trying to help the folks who live in Marion County achieve their goals and their desires. So I just wanted to kind of put that on the record before we can do our deliberations. So thank you for your work on this, both of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ditto. So I have a couple of questions. So on MapQuest, it shows that 57th Avenue is directly adjacent to the 5711 Brook Lake Road property. What I don't see is a road on Google Earth. What I see is what appears to be a hazelnut field, and I think that's the case because Mr. Klopstein referred to a hazelnut field, but it looks like shrubs. Where is 57, is there an adjacent road directly going north?
So it's an unimproved right-of-way is what we call it. So it could become a road if the county so wanted to invest and make that a public road.
So essentially, it's right like along here?
Yeah, it's on the other side of that gravel where the trucks are parked.
Oh, it's behind it, up here?
Yeah.
Okay.
It shows up, like if you use like an engineering or a planning viewer, it shows up as two lines of area that's not owned, but it's effectively, right now, it's shrubs and dirt with a bit of a driveway.
And it's a Marion County right-of-way?
It's Marion County right-of-way, but it's a, or it's a non-county road, I should say.
Oh, it's a non-county road?
Yeah.
Okay. That in theory connects to Ramp Street Northeast.
Correct, from Brook Lake to Ramp.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I can provide some clarification about the noise ordinance, I think, if you would like.
Please.
So there's two aspects here to noise. There's a requirement that's in the EFU zone for the conditional use, that the noise not have a significant impact on surrounding uses or neighboring uses. That's one criteria. There's an entirely different set of criteria in a different part of code, and that's part of the noise ordinance, the county noise ordinance. They're not necessarily connected with each other. So when you look at whether something has a significant impact on noise, the noise ordinance can inform that. If you violate the county noise ordinance, that can indicate that, yes, this has significant impact on noise surrounding properties. If you don't violate the county noise ordinance, that doesn't necessarily mean that the noise that's happening related to this use isn't still having a significant impact. It's a different type of criteria. And separately, you can meet the significant impact, but you can also violate the county noise ordinance. And I wanted to point out, and I could be confused, but the applicant referenced that the noise, the noise study indicated the decibels from the grinder were an average of 68 decibels at the property line. And the documentation provides, all the different zones indicated that they referenced the noise at, all seemed to exceed 65 decibels, maybe 64, 65 decibels. And they went far beyond, they went up into the 70s. The county noise ordinance prohibits any noise exceeding 65 decibels between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM.
No, 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM?
No, I may have said that wrong. 65 decibels between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, so during the day. So the noise cannot exceed 65 decibels measured at the complainant's property line closest to the noise source.
During the day?
During the day.
Do we have an ordinance that restricts noise at night?
Yes.
Okay.
Plainly audible between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
Okay.
Within a dwelling.
Okay.
So even, it seemed to me all the zones exceeded 65 decibels, even the ones further away, like along Brook Lake, and it exceeded it when the grinder was in operation. It's possible that the noise from traffic and ambient noise was also loud, but the grinder was louder in almost every zone and exceeded the 65 decibels. So it appears to me that the grinder, the old grinder, the 121-decibel grinder exceeds, doesn't meet the noise standards for the county. Separately, that there's evidence provided from neighbors that you were weighing that the noise has a significant impact that would not meet the conditional use criteria as well.
Okay. And did we, it's evidence you're reviewing as far as the noise study, or did you do a noise study?
That's the noise study provided by the applicant.
Right, from Lindsay.
From Lindsay.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, so, yeah, Brandon, and I'm gonna maybe throw a little loop in this thing. They've since put in a new grinder, supposedly 100 decibels at the operation level. So because of, I mean, if the noise is the only issue, if they did another noise study with the new grinder, there's a possible, there's a possibility that those numbers would be going down.
That's correct.
So.
All right. Austin, in the findings that you originally, were you the original planner on this?
I was not, but I'm familiar with it.
Okay, so for the first, when you did the original application and approved it with the first set of conditional criteria, it was stated that a berm needed to put a berm in.
Correct.
Why did the planner choose the east side of the property for that to exist and not the most adjacent property with people, meaning the north end of the property? Because the picture that the applicant presented has a berm next to a wheat field, which makes zero sense to me, other than echoing, I own, I literally live in wheat land, and so noise echoes throughout the fields, right? There's a lady that has some dogs that are 14 acres away, and I hear them all the time. Why wouldn't you require it at the north end versus cypress trees? Is there like some type of scientific evidence that proves trees are more restrictive for noise than dirt?
No, and I believe the intention was to have it everywhere around the mulching operation. The condition reads, "The applicant shall establish and maintain a contiguous vegetative or man-made wind buffer, which at the time of planting must be at least four feet in height and then grow to at least 12 feet tall around the perimeter of the area proposed for commercial use on the applicant's site plan to mitigate airborne pests and diseases, additionally noise and sound, or dust." So the contemplation was to try to have it around the entire mulching area, and so I do believe based on the pictures, they have a berm on the north side as well that does have the plantings in it.
Okay.
So I believe the intention is to have it surrounding the operation.
And that's specifically to reduce pests and diseases, not noise?
So what was written as pests and diseases, at the time when the staff decision was released, we didn't have complaints about noise?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. One of the things that's concerning to me, just so the applicant is aware, is that, I'm just gonna use my own personal experience, I live in the middle of EFU property out in unincorporated Marion County. I own a farm, there are farms around me, and I can hear my neighbors in their lives, whatever it is they're doing, specifically these people with dogs. I think it's important to be respectful of your neighbors, and the property, Ramp Street, is very close, those two homes are very close to your property, and much closer to where you have the cited location of your mulching operation, specifically the grinder. I'm very concerned about the disruption for them because of proximity to their home and your operation. I'm not exactly sure how to mitigate that at the moment, but I just wanted to let you know that if I was a neighbor, I would be very frustrated to constantly be hearing agitating noises near my home, even if knowing that that's not something that I've lived around for a very long time.
I would just say, one of the things that I'm concerned about, that I don't really understand, is the lack of connection with the local community and the local farmers. So that's part of the reason why I asked that question about the local agricultural community to which the land hosting the commercial activity relates. I don't understand the lack of talking to the neighbors, I don't, I don't understand, I'm concerned about that, I'm concerned that a neighbor came, or that evidence in the record said that they believed that the stipulation was violated. I'm concerned about all of that. I don't understand that, and I don't feel comfortable saying that this enhances the local ag community when we have a number of local farmers saying that this is harmful to them. I don't, I can't get there, specifically because the folks that submitted to us on the record are very credible people. Like Terry serves on our Brooks district, and like we're doing all sorts of changes to Brooks with the water system, and he's not opposed to changing and changing Brooks. So I've never heard him raise his voice, I've never heard him get angry, I've never heard him accuse anybody else of doing something wrong. So I just don't, when, I didn't hear any evidence of the applicant talking to these folks or reaching out to them or trying to meet with them to see how they, how, so I don't know how this application can meet this criteria if there's been no effort made to connect with them. And then, the other thing that I'm having trouble getting to is, it just seems that the commercial activity here is tree removal, and the primary customers are the state and local governments, not the farmers. That can, I think that can change. I think obviously relationships can be built, but I just don't, I didn't see any evidence of that really here.
Is that just, are you looking for feedback from someone, or is that just your declaration?
That's kind of my position on this. I don't think I can get to yes on this.
Okay.
I probably want to make sure that, we have code enforcement here that maybe have a question for them in the noise area. I see the product as enhancing agriculture in our local community, if we're taking it out to cattle and a dairy or whatever, so it's enhancing their footing or their mud area or whatever. I see that as a direct relation to enhancing the agriculture community in the local area. Maybe not to the farms that are across the street, et cetera, but still, it's going someplace. So my issue is that, is I want to hear from code enforcement on, specifically on the noise, and if could code enforcement come up and have a couple of questions for code enforcement? I know they've been on this, if that's okay, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Chad Goffin, I'm with the Marion County Code Enforcement.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks, Chad. Thanks for all your work that you do throughout the whole county, so appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so there was a, there's the noise study that was done prior to them replacing the grinder. Have you had any other comments or feedback since the new grinder's been there?
No, my original case was regarding a business, a tree processing business and solid waste. The grinder came later. I don't know when the grinder was installed, I don't know when they started doing grinding, but when I had an onsite inspection with the property owner, I did not see a grinder on the premises.
In 2023?
Twenty.
Correct, I believe that's what, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. Anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. So you haven't been out there since the?
Just from the public right-of-way, I've seen just equipment.
Okay.
But I have not personally heard the grinder when I'm driving by, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well.
So just a second. Since we brought code enforcement forward, does the applicant want to address any statements made? Okay. Thank you. I am not a lawyer, if you haven't noticed.
So I don't have an issue with the product being farmed, I don't, based on what we've heard, but I do have an issue with the noise. And I don't know if there's an option for them to do another noise study with the new grinder that they have. I would probably welcome that, if we could do that, if you, if the two of you don't want to go there, make another decision.
I have a couple of concerns I think I just want to talk to you guys about. So I appreciate your perspective on the relationships. I've lived out on my farm now four years, and I know three of my neighbors. I can tell you from my personal experience that when you move into a historical farm community, they're not the most excited to have new neighbors. Not that I've been unwelcome, but it's been very difficult to build those relationships because agriculture industry is very protective and distrusting of new anything. And so, I'm not going to defend the lack of relationship here, that does concern me specifically because we've had an ongoing situation for over two years. I think that there could have been more effort on the applicant's part to address some of the concerns and introduce his business and his mindset to the neighbors to maybe build a bridge, if they were open to that, but I don't know that they are open to it.
I think the thing that concerns me is that there was a code enforcement case.
Yeah.
Which means a complaint was filed.
Uh huh.
And I didn't hear any evidence today. And I didn't hear any evidence today that the applicant made any effort to reach out to the neighbors. And the evidence that we heard was that, that no effort was made, and it's been multiple years. So I think that's slightly different than you move into town and your neighbors don't like you. It just seems, it seems strange to me, I'm not.
I'm not saying my neighbors don't like me. I'm just saying that they're more reserved and less likely to engage than they would be in a neighborhood. It's very different out in the community, out in the country, I think. And I moved out there to be left alone. So I think that's kind of some of the mindset that exists out there. I am concerned about the amount of traffic that potentially could impact this community. The Brook Lake, the section of Brook Lake Road that the applicant lives on is not an enhanced section of a, of a, of a community. It's a very much farming community. The road is very narrow, there's ditches on the sides. I can picture it because I've been to the Peony Farm more than once. And so I'm, I'm concerned about the impact of, of traffic, especially if log trucks are coming in and out. And I don't know if that's to be, if that's the case. I don't know if Mountain View Tree Service is bringing log trucks, but that wasn't, that statement was made by one of the opponents. So I guess I have a question for the applicant if, what types of vehicles would be, are, or would be entering in and out of the property on a regular basis? Sorry, Brandon, I know you have to keep getting up and down. Mark, would you mind coming back up for me?
Can I have another question on the conditional use too? So.
So, just, I don't know what your trucks look like. So give me an example of the type of traffic that your property is seeing on a daily basis, and/or potentially in the future if this application was approved.
They are large trucks.
Microphone.
Yeah, speak into the microphone.
Oh, excuse me. They are large trucks. They can be, you know, Peterbilt, Kenworth.
So semi?
Freightliner.
Semi trucks.
Eighteen wheelers.
Okay.
Yeah. And trailers between 30 and 48 feet long, probably. The chip trailer, for example, is, I believe, a 45-foot trailer on a semi tractor. That's what hauls the chips out. And the trucks that haul the material in are between probably 40, well, 35 to, to 80 feet long.
Okay.
So definitely large trucks going in and out.
Thank you. Commissioner Cameron?
Yeah, this is on the conditional use, Madam Chair, thank you. So, number three, we already, I think, mentioned one and a half acres that would need to be changed if, if this was approved in these conditions to the two-point-whatever. Is that?
Yeah, change it to the, to the.
There's an agreement.
To the current, to two-point-whatever acres, or require the, require the applicant to survey the, the current area that they have, and, and that becomes the, the new area. And I think, I think one of the things that, that Commissioner Bethel, you raised with respect to noise is, you could require the additional, additional berming on the north, and then continuing on the west, to the northwest corner, similar to what they've done on the east. That would be a, a great way to deal with, to mitigate the noise, potential noise impacts that are there, and then require, require the applicant to continue with the, with the Leland Cypress planting. And make sure, we could have a condition of approval, Steve, in there, that, that required that, that he maintain those trees, and make sure that those trees survive, and if one dies, he has to replace it. So I mean, there's all kinds of things that we can, we can layer in here.
Yeah, I get it. But I, I can't go there based on the, the noise that we have a study on today. We need another, I would want another study, because the noise, obviously, based on Brandon's testimony, is above the noise level that we would expect, so.
And I think what I'm, I'm a little concerned about is, like, we keep talking about the machine itself, but we're not talking, and I re, appreciate that you stated that when they, when Lindsey came out with your previous grinder, you put large, medium-sized chunks in it for the, for noise. But what's the large impact? What's the large chunk impact? And like, how often is that existing? And how often are you grinding? And is this a daily frustrating operation? One of the opponents talked about is windows being rattled every day. Like, that is concerning.
Those are good questions. The grinding is an operation that is between, I would, I think we stated, 40 to 60 hours annually. So it is rare that grinding happens. And as far as large, the reason why I signified medium-sized chunks is they bounce around in the mill, where large chunks, the mill takes off slices, and it's much quieter.
Okay.
There's, there's grinding, the majority of the grinding is much quieter. I, I do believe the comment about the windows rattling, the only thing I can possibly think of that that would be related to is when the development of the property that was being done earlier this year, the, well, the berm, not the berm, but the rock that was placed for the equipment to move around, and that was built, or that was put in at the, you know, simultaneously with the berm. But that was pounded in with the excavator, and I realize that that is, like, I do believe his statement to be 100% true, that, that at that time, that could have been an issue. And I remember when the last hearing happened, I was just dumbfounded by the comment about noise, because I had not, we had not had that mentioned earlier. And I thought about it later, and I was like, I bet you it was when they were hammering that material in, because we had large rock brought in, like, six-inch-plus rock brought in. But one thing I want to mention, we did, we do have a berm on the north side. There is a 10-foot berm, and there's Leland Cypress planted on the entire length of it.
Okay.
So.
I just can't see it in this picture.
Continue down the, the conditions. Yeah, thanks. Number nine, hours of operation restricted from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Hours of operation being what, a truck coming and going?
The grinding is what, like, the actual operation happening on the actual property is what the intention was from that. Trucks do go in and out of there, you know, early in the morning, late in the evening, with, but they're not working in there as a, like, we're not processing material in there during those hours. But equipment does enter and exit beyond those hours.
So that would need, that would need to be listed as grinding between 8:00 and 5:00 PM, which you said is only 40 to 60 hours a year. Okay, and then the, number 17, "The storage of logs and debris for uses other than turning into mulch shall not be stored on property for a period of longer than two weeks from the date the logs or debris are brought in." I, I can't have our code enforcement out there every two weeks. So how, what, how do you, how do you say that log's only been there for two weeks? Is there a date on the end of it? You know, I, I've seen log trucks going down the road with spray paint on them. How, how do we do that?
Well, that's a good question that I do not have an answer for at the moment, because we would have to have some form of an inventory way to calculate that. The, one thing I can say, the photo of the logs that you can see in the back there, most of those logs are already gone, and they were there yesterday morning.
They what?
Most of those logs are already gone.
Where'd they go?
They already got hauled out.
So you, so I, I think this goes back to the testimony that Mr. Adelman presented with the amount of traffic coming in and out, and then you unloading equipment on Brook Lake Road, which is not a good idea. You're not just doing grinding, so you're transitioning logs on this property too?
Material comes in, it's sorted. There's the material that goes to the grinding. There's the material that goes onto the log deck. And, because what happens, we bring in, we'll bring in from a job, sometimes, you know, just like a trailer load size of material. And to, you know, are we going to bring in a few items, drop them there, unload them there, and then take a few chunks to the, the chip mill? We, we, instead, we basically consolidate, sort, or drop and sort, and then haul out the stuff that's not going to be, not going to be used for the grinding. Now, I don't know if that was brought to your guys' attention. We're, we've been in it, you know, so we, we take for granted that you guys know some of this stuff. I apologize for that. But material comes in, and some of the material that comes in there is not used for mulch.
Right.
And that's sorted.
I did miss that.
And goes out.
So I think that's the crux of the frustration with, you did a really good job of trying to tie these, the grinding to farm use. You did. I can't get there on the transfer of logs, because that is the purpose of your business. It's falling trees, and it's, it's moving them wherever they need to go. And right now, you're doing that on your property, which I appreciate this concept, that it's yours and you should be able to do what you want with it. Except for, you have to be able to produce more manufacturing, in my opinion, of a connection to farming. And I really appreciate the concept of having clean material go onto farms. I, I got some compost and some material delivered to my home recently that had a fair amount of metal in it, and now I own a metal detector, which is unfortunate. But the disruption around the community that is exclusively farm use, that's now imposed on with a timber company, is not the same. I just, I'm not there. Like, I can't figure out how it is directly farm-related. My biggest concern is the impact of traffic from log trucks and heavy equipment coming in that is not, not at all related to farming, because it's just not. I mean, if you owned a timber, designated timber property, where you were falling trees and doing things of that nature, which we have plenty of in the east county, I could get there. But I, just kind of processing all the things that are coming in, and I really appreciate your honesty, because I think that's super important to, to us, being able to make a decision. I just, I, the only portion of this that connects to agriculture in any way is the wood chips. But everything else that's incorporated with this business is not. And everything else is what creates the greatest impact. Like, I appreciate your dumbfoundedness by the noise of the grinder. I could see being frustrated as a neighbor by the number of log trucks coming past my home in a, in a, in a wheat field-farmed area. That would be surprising to me. So I, I just, I don't, I don't personally think that your, your connection to EFU is great enough to be able to, for me to be able to support your application. Yeah.
Okay. Madam Chair, do you want me to make a motion? Commissioner Cameron, do you have one that you want to say?
Okay, then yes. Oh, yes, Brandon, you'll need a microphone. Okay. Sure, thank you for coming back up.
Commissioner Cameron, it's my opinion that if they were able to generate a new noise study, they may be able to indicate, or demonstrate compliance with the Noise County Noise Orders.
I, I agree with you. I don't think that matters based on what I'm hearing in deliberation, though.
And there may not be time at this point in the process. It's something that if they showed up with that in the beginning, we would have more time to consider it. Now, because of the timeframe. So, one of my questions is, would the Commissioners, based on the information we have now, knowing we could have generated more if we had more time, or a different application, or started at a different point, would the noise also be a concern that you would make a decision on?
Well, I just want people to be able to move forward. I think that's sort of, my concern is that if, if I were to say, let's try to make this work, because I, I do admire the applicant. I think he's doing honest work, admire his team. I just, I'm worried about incurring more cost that's unproductive to his business. And I, I don't, I, I think it's probably better for everybody if we just make a decision today. But I'm open to different things.
Well, I don't, I appreciate the question, Brandon, but I think that the application specifically is requesting for us to make a decision on whether we can make a connection to farm use on the grinding operation. And that, if it was specifically just like a grinding operation, and there was other components to farming, then maybe. But this, to me, is not, this is, this to me is somebody who owns a piece of substantial amount of acreage, who's utilizing it to benefit their business, which is not agriculture-connected, with the exception of the grinding. So I don't see it as an exclusive farm use, conditional use. Like, I can't approve that. Like, I, I don't know how to word it, but that's, that makes any sense. So I don't think that, the noise always matters to me. So if we get another complaint about noise, then we're going to address that. But as far as this application goes, I think the noise of the grinder is irrelevant for me at this point. Because I don't believe the application meets the need for me on EFU, based on the logging type industry that's being supported on the property.
Based, if I may, staff would recommend, if the board were to deny this, including the, of finding that the noise component is not met, based on the testimony.
I think that's true. There's evidence in the record for that, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a separate part, it's a separate part of the analysis, right? I mean, that's the, the impact test, right? So that's, so I think what, I actually agree with Commissioner Bethel that the first part of the analysis is, I, I am not convinced this is a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. Just, that, that's the part that, that I'm having trouble with, right? The primary customers are state and local governments. That's the, that primary commercial activity. I don't see a close enough connection. Secondarily, there's this question of, even if it were, does it meet the impacts test? And that's the sound question. I, I think, I think there's evidence that both, both are problematic.
And I don't think we can answer the second question on noise, because I don't believe that we have sufficient evidence based on new, new equipment, and/or, or various opportunities to witness and/or test that noise of that equipment to make a decision. And no offense, but I, I appreciate Lindsey's skills, and I know what she does, but I also think there has to be a little bit more involved in sound studies.
I have a question for legal counsel.
Steve, please stop.
I have a question for legal counsel.
Sorry.
I'm trying to, I don't know if I need to identify whether two Commissioners both agree on the same reason for denial. And I know that there's agreement on this is not a, this has a connection to farming, commercial activity, but is it necessary to have two people agreeing on noise, on traffic?
So I think I have.
I just want to clarify, my finding that there's not sufficient evidence.
That's right.
That's actually the finding. I'm not making a determination that this, that, because I, I think there's a possibility where an operation like this could have a sufficient connection to farm use. I'm just finding that in this case, I'm, I have not found sufficient evidence that that is in fact the case.
Yes, and that's consistent with what I was going to say, is I have heard the same rationale from both, from two Commissioners, that there's not sufficient evidence that has been provided at this point. The applicant has the burden of proof. So absent sufficient evidence, I'm hearing two votes that the noise standard has not yet been met. Not that it could never be met, but it has not been met at this point.
And traffic as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Are you, is that, okay?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to confirm that before the record calls.
Okay, then Madam Chair, I would move that we close the public hearing and deny the request.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a no, because I, I believe that, I think there is a, a direct benefit to farm use with the, the product. I do, the noise is an issue. I can't, I can't go, there's not enough evidence for me to say that they're meeting the noise criteria, but I would like to see them have an opportunity to do that. So at this point in time, I'm going to be a no.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Wait, sorry.
No.
I just want to clarify, so, did you vote against the motion?
Yes.
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Could I also clarify, for as we're drafting the findings, the fourth issue on code enforcement, is the board exercising its authority to deny on the independent and separate basis also related to code enforcement?
I'm sorry.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Which one is that?
Okay, so, under our statute, because they're currently out of compliance with the Land Use Code, the board has discretion to approve an application to bring them into compliance, or not to approve an application and they stay out of compliance. So as we're drafting the findings, I've heard they're not a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. The noise, there's insufficient evidence on the noise. Those are two independent and separate reasons. But we could also include in the findings a third independent and separate reason, which would matter if this goes to Luba. and separate reason, which would matter if this goes to Luba, um, related to, um, that the board is not, um, it's choosing to exercise its authority not to, um, remedy on code enforcement, so code enforcement would be a separate reason for denial? Or we can leave it neutral on that, and not say-
I'm not sure, I'm ready to make a finding on that.
Okay. We'll leave that out then.
Great. Okay. Is there anything else for the record? Brandon, your face looks like you have something you need to clarify.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, please tell me.
I thought I heard the board close the hearing, but I don't know if you deliberated made a decision on the case.
I move to close the public hearing, deny the request, that's what we voted on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the, the public hearing has been closed, the motion has been made, we're going to go back into the regular board session, I have lost my agenda, is there anything else, Brenda? I think it, with this stuff, okay, then we're adj-
Maybe just the-
Longest of the year.
Yes.